Yes. Christine Holcomb.
Absent, excused.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Musling, yes. Bob Jacobs.
Yes.
And Kathy Schreikert.
Yes, thank you. Item number five is approval of minutes for March 23rd, 2022. Any comments?
Motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of March 23rd, 2022.
Second.
And I'm just going to make one comment. What page was that, Sue, that somebody pointed, Cindy pointed out to us?
Page two under Plan and Consultment.
Under Planning Consult and Reed's Quarters, that was built on Oceanside Drive should be colony. It was just a misspoke. So we had a motion, support. Any discussion?
I was absent, so.
Abstained.
You'll abstain?
Yeah.
We'll vote abstained.
Okay. That'll work. How about you? Okay.
Yep. Deborah Addy is absent.
Absent, excused.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris will tune in.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb, absent. Robert Musling, yes. Bob Jacobs.
Yes.
Kathy Schreikert.
Yes, thank you. Item number, item number six is public hearing. I'm going to read the public hearing comments, which are always posted on our agendas. Number one is all comments must be made through the chairperson. Comments directed to the applicant from the audience are prohibited. Two, individuals wishing to speak have time limits. Three minutes for each member of the general public and six minutes for a spokesperson of a larger group, for example, a subdivision association. Three, anyone wishing to speak is asked to sign the sign and sheet provided. However, anyone wishing to speak will be given the opportunity. Four, each individual will be allowed to speak once. It will be the chairperson's decision as to whether rebuttal comments will be allowed. Five, citizens may appoint a spokesperson to represent those who agree on a point of view. Six, public comments on a specific public hearing request should be made during the public hearing for that item. So under item number six, we have six A, which is the public hearing rezoning for the property located at 1682 North Channel rezoning application. I will open the public hearing at 7:06. Christopher Daggy will be our timekeeper, but I will start with, how about the planner?
Good evening, Commissioners. I have undertaken a review, as you requested, of their rezoning proposal. The applicant is actually seeking rezoning of the property, which is shown on my map here in the yellow. He's seeking rezoning from R1, a single-family residential, to C3, which is general business. There's currently a residential structure on the property. However, the applicant does indicate in his application that it's been used by storage by Champion Marine. And they, they also utilize it for the building for loading and unloading and storage of equipment, supplies, materials, and that kind of thing, including the property. The in-future intent according, the requested intent is to allow the property to be, the building to be used as an office and a maintenance building and expand the operation on that side of the, on the island there. It's directly adjacent to the shipping, the ferry docking area there and some additional areas that they're using. The, the property immediately, that way kind of northeast is currently zone B3, general business. And their request is that it be similar. Now, this shows the property here in the yellow still or green right there is, and then immediately to the west there, that property is all zone general, C3, general business. And the request is to expand one additional lot towards the east or southeast. Typically, requests for rezonings are based on a couple of things, compatibility with the area and on the master plan. When I reviewed your master plan, that was approved about a year or so ago. As you know, I wasn't here at the time. There was a different planner that prepared it. But unbeknownst to me, there is a, the property is designated on the master plan as commercial. So there must have been some kind of discussion back then that I wasn't aware of or wasn't a point, but it was definitely indicated as a future, in the future land use plan as commercial. Like I said, the, when I make recommendations of approval or denial, it's based on two things, compatibility and the master plan. And in both instances, it is, it's consistent with the master plan and it's somewhat compatible with the area being the area to the west is all zone C3. One of the concerns I have so is, is however, the property to, to the right there, to the west, excuse me, to the east, is a single-family home. And we're starting to penetrate into that single-family home area. So while I don't object to the rezoning, I say that when they come back for site plan approval and the property is being used now, should have come back for site plan approval originally for, you know, to be able to use it that way. But when they do come back for site plan approval for this new parcel, including, you know, some of the other things that are there, that we look to have protections of some sort, landscaping, walls and that to help prevent any nuisances to the adjoining property.
Thank you. I would next ask the applicant, if you would like to come forward and make any further comments, please do so. Just state your name, please. Sure, please, thank you.
Excuse me, I'm Jacob Bryson. I speak for Champion Marine and Champion's Auto Ferry. You have to forgive my appearance here.
You're fine.
Had some mechanical issues this afternoon. As I said in the application, we're planning on using this for possibly one building, possibly two, for replacing our existing office building as well as for enhancing and expanding our maintenance facilities. We also currently use this property for loading and unloading of the DTE equipment to get those pieces of equipment to the out islands further down on, on Harson's Island. So it's the only piece of property we have that we can do that. I do understand your concerns with the adjacent residential property, and we actually are under land contract to purchase that property to use specifically for a buffer zone. We have no intention of using it for anything other than a buffer and possibly if a crew gets stuck on the island and ice jam to give them housing.
That would be the house directly?
East.
Okay.
Directly east. I do have a copy of land contract if you'd like to verify it.
Okay. Thank you.
So my request would be, I don't know if it pertains now or to a subsequent site plan review, that the request for the requirement for screening, if you will, would be waived conditionally pending the successful completion of the land contract and subsequent deed transfer to Champion's Auto Ferry.
How long's the contract for?
Two years.
Two years?
Correct.
When did it start?
Forgive me.
No, you're fine.
Do, 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 October 2020. Actually, I'm sorry, it's not two years. It is, I believe it's four years, but.
So it started in 2020 October? And it's four years?
Yes.
Okay.
So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay.
Is that home being rented right now or?
No, it is vacant. The, both the, the, the structure that's on the property in question has been vacant for decades.
And then the neighboring home.
And the neighbor home, neighboring home is also vacant.
Any other questions at the moment? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If any member of the audience would like to come up and speak on this topic, they're more than welcome to. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and our timekeeper will. Okay.
New room is vacant?
Let's talk. Sure, you know what, I'll put it right there. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, hi, everybody. My name is Mark Kapanowski. My family and I live at 1636 North Channel Drive. We are the first occupied residential home next to the ferry. We're the third house from the ferry. As Jacob Bryson stated, the first house is the property in question to be rezoned. The second home, which is their, they're purchasing a land contract, but David, I mean not David, but Bobby Bryson currently owns the home. Since his mother passed away a few years ago, it was inherited to Bobby, and now the ferry is buying it from Bobby. So it's in the family still. The house that they're rezoning is vacant, but the 1664 house is being used today as an office by David Bryson. I'm against the rezoning of this property, and I'm asking guys to, to reject this request. I want to correct two untrue statements on the application first. The application, application states that the ferry company uses a property for winter storage and dockage of ferry boats. This is not true. On very rare occasions, a ferry boat is parked there, mainly when docks are being repaired on the island or the ferry company or the ferry, ferry hoist is being maintained on very rare occasions. Also, the ferry company states that the property is being used on a regular basis for unloading and loading of barges. Again, this is not true. On occasions, Bobby does load and unload the barge there on that property, but he uses the properties on the mainland, the ferry properties to the right and left of the ferry, and also the, the Jack Olson property to load equipment. And this is a rare occasion that he uses this property. To me, the rezoning request of this property does not make any sense. There are two existing ferry company commercial properties that have larger vacant land that are more suitable for an office and a maintenance building. The parcel requesting to be rezoned is much smaller, and the entire roadside yard today is a septic field. If you look at the two pictures on Appendix A1 and 2, it's, it's, it's the pictures of the current ferry office and the property located to the right of the ferry when you come off the island. The property sits on a much larger lot than a property requesting to be rezoned. It makes more sense to tear down this office building and build a much larger office and maintenance building on this property, since the property here is not next to any residential properties, it's next to the road commission yard. So nobody's impacted by a larger building. Second, the current maintenance building, which is located to the left of the ferry coming off the island, there's, there's plenty of property both in front of the ferry, in front of the building here, and rearward, rearward, rearward to build a larger maintenance building and an office building on that property. There's no need to, to zone the other one commercial. And that's, pictures three and four are of the current maintenance building here. Okay? Picture five is in this, is basically this aerial view. You can see how large the property is today, which is here where the current office building is. It's a very large piece of property, easily capable of handling a much larger building that they're asking to build on this little piece of property here. Okay? And also, the ferry building, the maintenance building can again be expanded to satisfy their request. As you can see, there's enough property already is owned commercial that can accommodate the request to build a new office and maintenance building, not impact any residential properties. Accepting this rezoning request will have significant negative impacts to my property values and my way of life. My property values will obviously decrease. I will be 100 feet closer, this is my property right here. I will be 100 feet closer to the ferry now, and I'll have possible blight, unpleasant views, and blockage of my waterfront view. Today, I do not see the ferry maintenance building. The, the house in question here, which is, which are asking to be rezoned, blocks my view of all the ferry, maintenance building, and all the storage behind the ferry.
When you get a second, can you have to wrap it up? Okay?
Okay. Can I, can I utilize Christine Knight's three minutes?
My name is Christine Knight. I live next to Mark. I yield my time to Mark. He's my, representing me.
So you're saying you're representing as a group, is what you're saying?
Well, there's only two of us.
There's two of us.
Okay, we'll call it a group. We'll call it a group. Go for it.
Uh, it'll bring the new office closer to my place by 100 feet now. I'll be within 100 feet of the ferry property now. It'll allow the use of the waterfront property for storage of heavy equipment, materials, steel, seawall sheets, pilings, trucks, trailers, anything. It'll now allow the ferry company to legally dock ferries, barges, tugboats in front of that particular property. And, and also allow them to use it legally for unloading and loading of barges. And also, you know, anything they want to do with it, they can build a new ferry dock, they can put another hoist there, anything they want with the property once it's owned commercial. A second negative impact, noise levels will increase at my house. I currently hear work being done on the ferry and the maintenance buildings, in the maintenance buildings when the, when the doors are open on a somewhat daily basis, whether it's grinding of the ferries, grinding of the metal in the, in the maintenance building, hammering, you know, whatever's going on at the ferry, I hear it almost on a daily basis. Imagine sitting with your family, out enjoying the weather, on your deck, in your pool, in your yard, and you hear noises coming from the ferry on a constant basis. And I got an example for you. Bringing that building, ferry property 100 feet closer to my properties and increase those noise levels. And as an example, this was taken last Sunday when it was 80 degrees at the house. My wife and I were sitting outside, enjoying the weather. I'm facing the ferry. We've got 20 mile an hour winds blowing left to right, so the wind didn't, didn't count or be a factor into the, of the noise. And this is what I hear on a normal basis. Oops, hang on. One second. Don't know if you can hear that or not. So this is a guy working outside the ferry, grinding on the ferry outside, but that same noise I hear when it's in the building, when the, when the bay doors are open. So I'm asking the planning commission to take my comments strongly into consideration and reject the rezoning of this property from R1, one-family residential, to C3, general district, district. The ferry company already has commercial properties with enough space to build a new office and maintenance building that does not impact residential neighbors. There's no need to rezone the 1682 North Channel Drive property so that the ferry can tear this house down and build the office and maintenance building that they're requesting. And just a note, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the island, but where we're at, you know, we're the only residential properties on the island in this area. This is, this is the Brownsfield Park, there's no residential properties here. This is the vacant commercial bank that we used to have, Art Cook's Marine Service. This is all the road commission, Sunset Marina, big wetland here, so nobody's impacted this way. The letter that we got only went out to the Bryson family, the Bryson family, myself, and Christine Knight, the four of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to come to the podium and make a comment in regards to this public hearing and this property? Please come forward and just state your name and address.
Hi, 4460 Middle Channel. When I read the attachments that were posted on the agenda from Champion Auto Ferry and Cassian Planning Group, it looked like they were already using the property that is zoned commercial. In Cassian, Cassian's planning and analysis, they state, and I quote, "The applicant is requesting to rezon the property to C3, general business, in order to legitimately use the property as an office and storage." When they say legitimate, legitimately, does it mean that they are not doing it legitimate now? Champion Auto Ferry also states that they are using the vacant building for storage for the company and utilizing this property for winter dockage of ferry boats. They also admit to use the residential property for loading and unloading of the barges. If this is not legitimate, why has Clay Township been allowing it? And why would we grant the request when they have been breaking the rules? They want to claim to build a new office building and maintenance, but they don't include a plan for this. There's no idea where, how, when. This does not seem right either. We want to have everything in writing because the way their current property looks is now embarrassing and has for years. We've been here 22 years, and all it looks is rusted, dirty property on both sides. As an example, they were allowed to keep their seawall high and not pound it in and down. They had to be taken to court several times by the adjacent neighbors before they finally treated the eyesore the way it should have been. I don't think anybody but a Bryson would be allowed to get away with these things. If this planning commission agrees, this rezoning, it just shows that all of Clay Township, that this family is allowed to do whatever they want. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Any other member of the audience like to come forward? Okay, I don't see any hands at this point. We did, we as the planning commissioner are receipt of one document that got to us today. So we have Tom Cozel's, two pages, let him read that. And then I had one that was left in my door of my garage, you know, we've got one. Some people obviously know where I live somewhere.
Yeah, this is an email. This is an email from Jim Newman. He doesn't give his address or where he lives on the island, but he's representing several people, he says, was sent today. As I am unable to attend the April meeting, and I am requesting this letter to be read into the record during the public hearing regarding the rezoning of 1682 North Channel from residential to commercial, also, please forward this email to other members of the planning commission. Dear Planning Commission for Clay Township, I am writing this letter to you today because I will be unable to attend the April meeting due to a work commitment. I am in no way claiming to be a spokesperson for all of Harson's Island. I am, however, writing this on behalf of a number of concerned and quite frankly pissed-off citizens, both on and off the island, who have asked me to state their concerns. The reasons these citizens are not wanting to state these things publicly themselves is something that the Clay Township Planning Commission and other public officials should find concerning. These people are afraid of retaliation. They have been retaliatory, they have seen retaliatory behavior by Clay Township officials over several years, and they have become increasingly fearful due to the Clay Township Board's mistreatment of trustee Marine Bori for bringing citizens' concerns to the board. I am delivering this message as a conduit for concerned residents. I am willing to meet with any and all of you to further discuss these and other issues brought to me. Citizens shouldn't be afraid, but they are. This group, as well as township board, should be listening to our residents and responding positively and conducting themselves in a manner that reflects the best practices of the township as a whole. There are a number of you that seem to operate with Clay Township as a whole being your priority. You should be proud of yourselves and hold your heads high. However, there has been clear cases of conflict of interest, self-serving deals, and selective enforcement that seem to be far common, far more commonly accepted or simply overlooked. This cannot continue. A major example is that of Champion Ferry. Champion's intentions to have a residential property rezoned to commercial or commercial mixed use has a large number of people upset. Here are some of the questions that residents feel should be asked. One, why is it necessary for Champion to expand their commercial footprint? What is their reason for this? Two, what are the repercussions to the island with more land being used for Champion Auto Ferry's junkyard? I use the language the concerned citizens used. Currently, they have a buffer. Who benefits from the change? How is this good for Clay Township? Will the same consideration be given to everyone that owns property in Clay Township who wants their property to be rezoned as commercial? Having it zoned residential means they have to adhere to residential ordinances that will protect the island from the Champion junkyard sprawl that isn't a better idea. They already utilize the waterfront as they seem to wish commercially. Why is this even allowed? Champion's Auto Ferry commercial property is the biggest eyesore in Clay Township. It is clear that Champion's Auto Ferry can't take care of the commercial property that they currently have, or perhaps they feel they don't have to. It is clear that residents' opinions of their slobbery just does not matter at all to them. Furthermore, one doesn't have to be an OSHA-compliant inspector to tell that the ferries neglect to their existing commercial, oh, excuse me, they have, they have going on at mainland side of their property is riddled with safety issues. Champion's Auto Ferry neglect to their existing commercial property is reason enough not to let them expand their current operation. Their messes should no longer be tolerated, and there should be no support given to them expanding their footprint on our community. If there were any other business conducting themselves this way, they would not be allowed to expand commercially, nor should Champion. All of you know right well that Champion Auto Ferry is constantly given a pass because of their relationship and influence of family member, Township Supervisor Artie Bryson. The select enforcement has got to stop. This is a conversation for another day. In summary, I along with many others of whom have asked for me to be their voice, do not want Champion's Auto Ferry to expand their commercial footprint junkyard. Champion's Auto Ferry request to expand their commercial footprint should be denied in order to stop the Champion junkyard sprawl. There is no reason to support this expansion of their commercial footprint that is any way good for Clay Township or the people of Harson's Island, not one. Thank you, Jim Newman, speaking for myself and on behalf of several concerned citizens looking for a better clay.
Thank you, Tom. I have one more that was left at my garage door, so I'm going to read this one. And I didn't have time to get it to the rest of you, so, but I will give it to Sue so she has it in the pack that we have. Says to the planning commission, "I am requesting this letter and highlighted information from the attachment to be read into the record during the public hearing regarding the rezoning of 1682 North Channel from residential to commercial. I am the spokesperson for a large group of concerned citizens. No one in this group will come forward due to fear of retaliation for Clay Township government officials. For many years, we believed Champion Auto Ferry has been breaking ordinances and not receiving code violations. To our knowledge, this has not been addressed. Attached, you will see the township violations we are referring to. Please read the highlighted area aloud for the record and send a copy to Clay Township requesting the co-defender to research and request that Champion Auto Ferry comply and correct any ordinances, safety, or code violations. This rezoning application should be denied until it is shown that their existing property is safe for the community and can be properly maintained. A residential property should not be zoned commercial when the existing property this family owns is in such shameful condition. Residents and visitors ask why Clay Township allows a ferry entrance to look the way it has for years. They also state that it appears to break OSHA regulations. The main question that is continuously asked, why, quote, "Why do Clay Township officials allow this?" end quote, we have no answers. Now Champion Auto Ferry is requesting to create another unsafe and unmaintained commercial property on the Harson's Island side? Question mark, unacceptable. We don't need more commercial property in their hands when much of the existing island commercial property is sitting dormant due to their influence over the transportation or lack of it to Harson's Island. Thank you. It is not signed. But what the attachment was, was a Xerox copy of, I believe it's our section ordinance 20.39, marine dredging, sheet pile operations, and storage of marine-related construction. And they highlighted, number one, when adjacent to residential use or one-family residential or RM zoning district, a minimum 25-foot green belt and/or a masonry wall shall be provided along the abutting residential use or district and shall be planted according to the standards of section 3.10. Number two, there shall be a landscape area of at least, it looks like 12, it kind of got squished up in the copy, feet between the property line and the street and the parking or storage area. Three, maintenance equipment and material, I'm not sure what that word would be, are to be neatly stored in the areas when they are screened. to be neatly stored in the areas when they are screened from view of the adjacent uses. And number four, there shall be no storage of used material and/or used material such as soil, dredging spoils, et cetera, except in enclosed and semi-enclosed area designated and approved for such use on the site plan. Such enclosed area shall be landscaped, walled, greenbelted, fenced according to the provisions of section 3.10. Five, there shall be no construction or assembly of barges permitted as such a use. So I will give this use, so you can have it for later to include. So those are the two items that we received from people who couldn't be here. If you want, if you want to come forward and state your name. And make a comment.
My name is Dan, Dan Newman, 4460 Middle Channel. Did they, did Champion Ferry, did they present any type of a, of a plan or pictures or like what's normally done when, when somebody does that type of addition to their?
This is just a, this is just a request for rezoning. The public hearing is just for rezoning. Once, if it were to be rezoned, there's a whole list of items that can be?
I understand that part of it.
So no, nothing's been submitted.
But what I would want to know is if they have, so that you know what they're planning on doing is what the, is what the question?
At this point, we're just dealing with rezoning.
So it's just, okay, thank you.
Thank you. You too, thank you. Any other comments from the public? One more time, anybody else have a comment? Okay, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing at 7:35. Any other questions, any comments for our planners? Now that we've heard the comments from the audience, we've read into the record, we've received. Steve, you have any further comments? I'm not sure if you had any of this information as far as the extra? Did you? Okay. So this is a rezoning request.
Mr. Bryson, why, you've been running operating it the way it is for decades. Why all of a sudden to change?
Because I am attempting to bring the property more into compliance as opposed to just willy-nilly, just doing what we want. And because in the future, I understand if I do want to build a building, the site plan is going to come before the funding commissioners, and obviously if the zoning doesn't match what site plan is intending, it's just going to be denied. So what's the point? So I want to get the zoning correct first, and I certainly don't want to spend money on an architect to design buildings and site plan if, before I know of the zoning's going to be changed.
So I got a question, I guess, on that, Jacob. To kind of expand on it, if your, your thought or your concern is to bring the business back and to be more legitimate, or whatever it was that you said, the area, why would you not want to start with what you currently have? Because I think, I think the citizens are, have a concern. I personally don't think it's the biggest blight, and there's a building just this way of the ferry that I believe is a bigger blight, but it is, it's an eyesore. And I think it's concerning to the citizens that, you know, that you'd want to expand a business and not, I guess, take care of what you currently have. And again, I just see, I see that the need or the desire to expand that on the island side may, may be there, but, one, you've been using that, that residential property as a commercial property. Again, I think if you were concerned about what you're saying you're concerned about, you would have come prior to this to look to have that changed before you started using a residential lot as a commercial lot. You're kind of, you're kind of coming to planning after the fact of, you know, of doing what you've done, and then come to see if you can, you can change that zoning. It's a little concerning to me that that, you know, the process that you're, you're working on that. Is there any intent of, I guess, addressing the issues that people do have? I mean, I know you've probably heard of them, but some of the concerns of, you know, the way the properties look or are being maintained.
For the property in question, I'm sorry, the property that's up for review currently, any buildings that we would install would be prefab steel buildings that would be put up, we would contract that out. Would not be using our own labor, we'd be contracting it out, it would not be a long-drawn-out ordeal. For the property on the mainland you reference, unfortunately, we wanted to do a whole lot more last year, supply chain issues, and unfortunately, labor issues. I mean, I can't, can't name an industry that hasn't suffered from labor issues and is still not suffering from it.
I think that's understood, but I think there are some things in that property that probably could have been addressed, maybe to at least give the, the appearance that you're trying to maintain it. Again, that's, I guess that's not what we're here to talk about, but, you know, we hear the, the concerns from the citizens too about the expansion. I also, Mr. and Mrs. Kapanowski, I understand their concern about bringing that commercial property closer to them. Again, we can't tell you how to, how to build your buildings or where to put your stuff, but I do, I do understand the concern.
Chris had a very good point, especially on the mainland. History repeats, it's been, that property been, has been in blight since I can remember, and nothing's been done, other than more and more and more stuff pile up there, and no attempt whatsoever to remediate that situation. So I fear that if we do this, it does come to volition, that we're going to have the same situation on the island side. So there's no guarantee. And what we need, or what I would need is a guarantee of some sort, that the mainland be taken care of first, and then you go ahead and do what you want to do, and maybe with the island side.
Any other comments from, or questions from board members?
What was the ordinance that they cited on the?
On what I read in?
Yeah.
Oh, hold on a second, where did I put it?
Up top, I think, yeah.
Oh, you're right, thank you. It is ordinance section 20.39, marine dredging, sheet pile operations, and storage of marine-related construction. That's what they cited, whether it's applicable or not. I believe it is, too. This is what showed up in my door.
Unless they ask and receive the waiver.
Steve, because it's in the master plan, does that paint us in a bit of a corner?
I'm sorry?
Because this property is in the master plan as commercial?
It does make your decision a little bit more difficult.
Yes. So probably the wisest thing would be to let it, vote on it going commercial, but you cannot build anything on it without the special land use, just like you state in the last paragraph there. Might not be the most popular decision, but.
So I have, I have a few questions for Steve. So it looks like this, the ordinance is under the special land use. So, correct? Okay, so that, I mean, that's what kind of were. So if they were to do anything with the, that would have to do with marine dredging, sheet piling, that would all have to be, if it is under the special land use, they'd have to come back in front of us to have that approved.
Dredging of that would have to definitely, there are certain uses, however, if it's warehousing, storage, you may not have to vote for special land use, then may only be site planned, but they still have to come back before you.
Right.
Regardless, depending on exact uses of which category it goes into.
Let me ask you this, Steve, if I could. Once it's rezoned, I know what they're proposing, but we don't have a crystal ball, we don't know what's in the future, there's a whole list of items that could be now able to be put in there. Forget the ferries there, you could put, you could put a marina, you could put retail stores, you could put funeral home, it says. So when we're looking at rezoning, it's not, we can't rezon it with, that's what they're going to do. It opens up this whole list under C3 General Business.
Yeah. This, this kind of, where for greenbelt issues and everything else, and that's where I was kind of going, is if they have, there's already a structure on the building, so technically once it's rezoned, they could essentially use that as a commercial, that building as a commercial use. So would that affect how they would have to, how would that be affected if, if we approve this to have them bring up the greenbelt or anything else?
Well, remember that site, that use of that building has never been approved as a site for a site plan, right? So that's.
So they would, even to use that, they would have to come back in front of us?
Yes.
So, okay.
Any more questions, or you all sat?
Thinking good.
Currently, it's supposed to be used for residential, and it's not. I think the neighbor's concern is that you can have as many orders as you want, but if they're not being followed, you know, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't matter, I mean, what the rules are, because right now it's really not, it's being used for something it's not supposed to be used for. Address that at all to the neighbors, just what's going to be done to in the immediate future to make it more in compliance and more neighborly, neighbor-friendly on the island side?
For the parcel in question?
Yes.
There are no plans to change anything as far as adding additional noise with that parcel, and certainly not in the next couple of years. I mean, it'll probably take me two, three years to just get to the point where plans are drawn up to present to you.
But right now, it's being used as.
Just.
Commercial storage, while it's not used as residential, though.
Correct.
And there is, there is use of barge traffic going into the back and being used as a commercial use on a residential property.
Correct.
Which is not, to my understanding, legal for that property. Is there anything that can tell the neighbors that would make them feel better about what's going on going forward here? I mean, is this, if this gets approved, is that going to stop until you get an approved site plan, until you get things brought up for a commercial use?
Well, I mean, I certainly will not be building anything on that property without submitting a site plan for your review.
But it would be continued use of commercial on the residential.
Do I understand it correctly? It's not approved for that use right now, they'd have to be submitted on that, right? As it sits today?
But it almost sounds like they're coming after the fact to ask, to ask, and I know at times this township has taken a very strong opinion that you're coming after the fact, that's not what you're supposed to do, you're supposed to come to the township boards first. So it really sounds like the property's being utilized in a commercial fashion, I don't even know how many years, got any idea?
Not offhand. I mean, if you'd like, they can clear all the stuff out of that structure, and then it'll just be vacant.
If it does get approved, commercial, for them to continue use as it's used today, would their site plan have to be submitted for them to continue to use it going forward here as commercial? They would have to submit a site plan to use it legitimately going forward as commercial?
Yes.
So any continued use of the commercial, and it would have to be approved?
Yes.
So we'd have to do a site plan.
Or special land use, depending on the exact use.
Unless it just gets changed to commercial and nothing is done with the property, it just gets emptied out and no one does anything with it?
That's a possibility, too.
Because you can't tell requirements to the change of zoning.
There's a couple different things. This is a traditional rezoning in the state law, state enabling legislation says that we can only deal with land use decisions, you know, like if you approve the land use, any of those that you had mentioned, Mr. Chairman, could be allowed in there. There's another option, however, that the planning commission cannot ask for, and that's a traditional zoning, and that has to be offered by the applicant, and that would be accompanied by our professionally-prepared site plan with detail of which would be tied into the rezoning. And if it wasn't adhered to within a certain time period, the rezoning would be done abroad. But that can only be offered and cannot be requested, can only be offered by the petitioner and cannot be requested by, again, state legislation.
But it has to be offered by the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
Would that be something you'd be willing to do?
Not at this time.
So we have what's in front of us, just straight rezoning, and if the applicant at this point is not coming to us for a, what was your phrase you used today? What was, conditional?
Conditional.
Resoning?
Conditional rezoning. That would be on the applicant's part.
That would be totally up to the applicant.
And any applicant, not just this particular?
Any applicant.
Yes.
Like I said, the state's very clear on that, they don't want planning commissions to force.
Sure.
If they were to be, if it was to be turned down tonight, there's nothing preventing the applicant to resubmit with the site plan conditionally. There's no, that doesn't stop them from going forward.
The township board also turns it down.
Any other discussion, comments?
Well, we see how it's current, how it's currently being run, we all know that, we don't have to go on that any further, right? But if we did take it to commercial, would we have more opportunity to control what's going to be there than we do today?
Not really sure how, because no one's forcing us.
Well, they either do nothing, right, to it, or they use it, or they submit a site plan, how they're going to use it.
I, sorry. Let me ask you this. Do we have to make a decision tonight because we have a lot of things that have been flying around, or is it something we can maybe lull over?
Right to table for a specific reason? Or take action?
So talking about that, Steve, could we table it for clarification on, because it's being used commercially currently, could we table it and request that the petitioner brings us a site plan because he's already using it as a commercial use? Or would we have to approve it and then him bring a site plan for what he's currently doing? We're working backwards.
I refer to the attorney on that, I'd be careful because it's basically not approving something based on an ordinance violation.
So we could, we could essentially table it for clarification with the attorney and fact gathering until next meeting.
That would be my recommendation, relating in that direction.
Then I would make a motion that we table the request for rezoning of 1682 North Channel for, I guess, for fact-finding and.
Clarification from the attorney.
Clarification from the attorney.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Chris Hiltonus. Seconded, I've got a lot of Chris's going.
I have to support Christopher, that seconded.
Yep, he seconded.
I have a question, what about the application fee? They had, when it comes back again, is that going to be waived, or do you have any idea?
Well, we're continuing it, so.
It's a continuing, same thing, I would think.
Am I correct? We don't have to do another fee.
The other thing is, are you going to help?
Right.
To table R1 to C3 on 1682. Channel. For legal.
Clarification.
Legal clarification.
Information gathering. Did you get the motion, Sue?
Yeah.
Yes, fact finding clarification from the attorney.
I believe.
Everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
Alright, roll call, please.
Deborah Addy?
Captain Excuse.
Mark Fraschard?
Yes.
Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris Eltonin?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb?
Captain Excused.
Yes.
Robert Muesling?
Nay.
Bob Jacobs?
Yes.
Kathy Schwenkert?
Yes. She passes. Thank you very much. We'll see where we get with next month.
Alright, moving on to item number seven, which is new business. It's a site plan review for seventy-three seventeen Dyke Road. Steve?
This is a request that came in that, for revised site plan, actually revised special land use, it was kind of a special land use, that was approved by the planning commission. I'm not sure how long ago, but it was recently here.
Did you get the email?
I did get the, some of that information. Mr. Henninger is actually the owner, and he's asking that some additional items be allowed to be placed on the site in addition to the building that's already there. He's asking for a seven thousand square foot building that would house ice cream concessions, bathroom facilities, an outdoor tiki bar, an outdoor area for grilling and eating, a new storage shed, an outdoor refrigerated cooler which is connected to the restaurants, outdoor dining and educate, entertainment near the restaurant, two outdoor covered sun shades for the picnic area, an overfro parking area should it ever be needed, and he's also requesting a, kind of a reapproval, or, not a reapproval, excuse me, overturning of your denial of this on the last time, but he's now requesting that overnight boat docking not be limited to one night, and that boat rafting be allowed. Those were two conditions previously that you couldn't allow, it wasn't allowed boat rafting, and he was required to commit to one night only. He's asking that those conditions be waived. Planning commission can, under special land use, provide any conditions you'd like. You have the option of approving this as a revised site plan, or denying the request, whatever you'd like, and/or the option of determining that this is a significant enough changes that you could reopen another public hearing at your next meeting, so it's up to you. Mr. Henninger is here to talk about the proposal.
Thank you for your presentation, appreciate it. Mr. Henninger?
Yes.
And then Henninger, sorry, I said that wrong.
That's right. No problem. Um, you know, I'm back before the board, I've opened up the restaurant, and, you know, followed pretty much, I mean, I followed precisely.
Can I, when did you open the restaurant?
October twenty-ninth.
Thank you.
Yes. And, you know, there were some things originally, when we worked with the previous planner, when we went through all this, that, you know, there were a couple of things that I needed to change, which Stephen talked about, you know, basically because the permits from the Army Corps are requiring me to do something that the previous planner wanted me to take off and not do. So there's something to do with the signage, but I am looking to add another building. You know, the restaurant's been going really well in terms of what I've done. I've hired, I got the count today, sixty people from the Algonac area and Clay Township, so I've hired a lot of people in the area. You know, we've been, you know, servicing and taking care of the area, you know, with no incidents. You know, we've cleaned up this property and I think really improved what's going on with the area, and I'd like to, you know, add another building to this location. You know, we wanna have an ice cream shop on the island. You know, I want outdoor grilling, you know, on the island. These are things that, you know, our local customers are so excited to hear about, you know, and it's something that we'd like to provide. You know, we're also looking to do the outdoor weddings and things like that, but, you know, based on a location, sometimes the wind and whatnot can cause problems with the tent that we planned for, and, you know, my concern is that, you know, in the event that some weather comes up, that I've seen out there, since I've been there every day for the past two and a half years, between the construction and whatnot, that, you know, I'm concerned that, you know, maybe I should have an indoor hall type operation upstairs where if it looks like conditions aren't gonna be favorable for someone's planned event, whether it's a charity event that I'm doing, or a wedding event, that we can take that inside. So I have a spot that I've put on the site plan, a footprint, which would, you know, provide that for us and the community. You know, as I said in the very beginning, you know, we wanted to be an asset, you know, to the community. There was a lot of concern about, you know, what was gonna happen, you know, with the traffic and things like that, and I think I've displayed how we took care of that with the bridge and, you know, how we connected, and also what we've done with our, our landscape plan and our beautification of the property. So this new building would have the fine sightlines of sunset and the lake upstairs. Downstairs would provide more restrooms, which, you know, if anyone's been in the property, they already know that I have, you know, ample restrooms for the size of the building that I've, that I have there currently. And so this new property would give me some additional storage, you know, which would be within the C three list of items that I can do. And then, as far as the, the couple of items that are concerning for me in terms of what was restricted by the previous planning, was the requirement by the Army Corps that is listed in the permit. We originally took docking that was on the property, that was forty-five feet into the canal on the east side of the property, which is the long backside of the property. We originally had docks out there forty-five feet. We also own the bottom lands back there. We negotiated with the Army Corps to take that forty-five feet out of the docks, because everybody knows with, with docks, sometimes you're sticking out past the docks, which could cause a problem. We didn't wanna see any problems with boats going in and out of there, so we agreed to keep it so that we could have the flow in and out, you know, into the area. So that's why the Army Corps and we agreed on a thirty-foot restriction on that side, and required signage to be mounted on the pilings, which indicated that for our staff that will be working to enforce, you know, to make sure that guests don't violate that, so we keep the, the flow good on the outside. So that's one of the things which, you know, to me, you know, it seemed like that wasn't, I mean, I, I think that was something that I, I really had some difficulty with originally, but, you know, I wanted to come back and prove what we could do. The planner at that time did speak to me, saying that once we got the overall approved, that there were things that could be done, you know, I think indicating that this would be one of them, but without saying that specifically. The other thing that was restricted on it was, you know, the overnight stay. You know, we're planning, you know, when we do events, that, that, that boaters who come to our, our area, you know, would wanna stay more than one night and be, you know, kicked out, you know, if there is a wedding or event or something like that, you know, they're gonna wanna come in, you know, the night before, the day before, stay, you know, they're not gonna wanna go out driving after drinking and whatnot. You know, marinas typically don't have a one-night stay. Any, any state-owned marina, they're not doing a one-day requirement. So I feel that that was something that was, you know, implemented by the previous planner, you know, to kinda see what we're doing, you know, or trying to have some say in terms of that. My understanding from the Army Corps and Eagle is that, you know, they're controlling the waterway, you know, in terms of the thirty-foot restriction, and it's not really something that would be done outside of the Army Corps who controls that. So those are those two items, and I do have an outdoor refrigeration cooler that I'm looking at, similar to many restaurants, if you guys are familiar, where they'll have an outdoor cord, uh, storage area. This is to keep the beer cold, the food, you know, up to proper, you know, temperatures and whatnot. And then there's a, an item that's kind of a, you know, it seems like it might have slipped through the cracks. I mean, we have an outdoor, we're allowed for outdoor entertainment in the tent event area, but there was a restriction that was written in there, and I don't know if that was a mistake, but had not been caught about allowing it outside at the restaurant. So, you know, what's odd about that is I have the outdoor area, and if they wanna sit on, you know, stand on the concrete, and the Meldrum Brothers are playing on the concrete, that's, you know, in the restaurant area. So, you know, I would like to get that fixed, I guess, is the way I'd put that. And then we're looking at some kind of sun shades and things like that, something that would be, you know, for shade purposes, you know, because the sun can get intense in the summer out there, so. And then there was also an outdoor tiki bar originally on the original plans that was submitted. When working with the previous planner, they wanted us to, they asked me, you know, when could I get the pool in? The pool that was approved by the Army Corps and Eagle. I told him that there was no way I could get the restaurant built, because it had taken well over a year to get my plan approved. There was no way I could get the pool in by 2022. And he wanted to take it off the plan, so we took the pool and the tiki bar off the plan at that time, and that that would be resubmitted in a form like this. So that was from the original. But my plan is not to put the pool in there, but I would like to put the tiki bar in there. And I've already had the plumbing and, you know, put in, and it was, you know, inspected and approved, or approved, it's underground plumbing that was ran outside the building when I built the building for that purpose. You know, to try to put it in after the building was built, you know, would be, you know, tearing up like the whole front of the building.
Excuse me.
Yes.
So the tiki bar would be in conjunction with the outdoor dining?
So, yeah, the tiki bar would be under the original building. There was a spot on the original plan that had the tiki bar underneath the original building part, which is, would be where the pool wrapped around, so, yeah. And, you know, in terms of the, the capacity and whatnot, the, the planner, you know, had restricted our use on the island from, you know, he counted capacity based on cars only, and, you know, I had brought up that, you know, I mean, we have boats coming in, and boats bring people as well, so, but he didn't count one person, you know, coming by boat as, as for my capacity number on the island, which, you know, is, I, I think unfair, you know, in terms of, you know, being on an island and building an island destination, and to have boats approved to come in and not being able to count one person towards my capacity. So that was an issue, too, that, you know, he, the previous planner was saying that if a boat comes in, they're gonna have to have a car spot, so the car spot, you know, would take up from someone else's car. So that was kinda the issue that he had, you know, and, you know, I tried to explain that anybody coming by boat wouldn't be bringing their car, but that was the issue there. So he only counted the cars for the capacity, no boats.
This doesn't sound.
No.
I know, I know it doesn't.
No, 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 no.
There's, I was gonna bring some of the stuff up after he's done.
Your, your, your interpretation of what has happened, I would beg to differ with some of these, and I know we have at least three new members sitting here, and four of us who lived through this the first time through.
That's, I have questions and stuff to ask.
Yeah, but continue on, I just.
Okay. I think I've hit pretty much everything. The grill location, I have two locations, one at, near the current building, and then one would be at the new location, you know, providing you guys see fit that I could put another location up there. A good note for the township is, you know, my taxes have gone up five times from what it was originally, just so you guys know. So I am employing people, I am keeping our nose clean over there, I am operating in good standing with all the Army Corps, Eagle, liquor control, you name it. So I'm hoping that you guys can find it so that we don't have to go through, you know, quite what we had to the last time.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Is there a gravel parking lot over at your place?
There is a, the parking lot, I had, I, I created the hundred-and-six car parking lot, which was approved.
Right.
Worked with the building supervisor, Gary, and we paved half the property and the U driveway, half the hundred-and-six car parking lot, which is fifty-three spots, including the handicap, which Gary wanted to make sure was covered, which it was. The back half, fifty-three, the second half, was gravel, and we have the same company coming in within the next ten days, which I've notified Gary to come in and pave that. There's been some settling and things that we had to watch out for, which, you know, we're gonna be compacting and dressing with the next level of asphalt, so that should be done within the next couple of weeks. I have an agreed contracted price for that.
So you're saying, you're saying the gravel part was originally, when we dealt with this however long ago, was the paved part of that one-hundred-and-six?
Of the hundred-and-six. There's curb, there's curb on both sides for the hundred-and-six.
Right.
We completed half of the property, which, you know, the trucks had driven on and compacted, and, you know, that was all solid ground, although we did have to cut a big piece out and repair it that had sunk. The back half, you know, we've been adding gravel and compacting it, people are driving on it, and now, you know, we feel it's, it's, it's to the point where, you know, we can, we can asphalt it and, and it'll be, it'll be there, so. And then beyond that, there's gravel as well, so that's basically part of what we're looking at is, you know, to extend, you know, overflow gravel parking lot, which would continue down that same strip, but would not be, would not be paved right now, because there's other things that I need to do down at that side, if I'm gonna be bringing utilities, you know, second fire hydrant, electric, gas, and all those utilities past the initial hundred-and-six car parking lot. So right now, I have about two-thirds, little more than that, that's, that will be paved within the next two weeks, of which half of it is already paved, more than half actually if you count the U driveway. And then I'll have the, the, the remaining property down there that will be, will have gravel on it.
Okay.
And that helps with the, you know, the property. I mean, it gets to be a muddy mess, we don't want people, people will drive down there, you know, and turn around and, you know, people drive down there all the time, and then if you're driving out, you're taking out, you know, if it's muddy, you know, you're taking out mud and dirt, so we don't want that on the road.
Well, thank you for your update.
Yes.
How big, how many, in that overflow, how much parking you anticipate?
It's, it's, I, it's big enough to hold sixty-five cars.
Okay.
That's in addition to what's your original site?
On top of the hundred-and-nine.
Origin of the hundred-and-six.
Hundred-and-six, rather.
The building that's going in is going to be?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand on the first floor and seven thousand up, so it's fourteen thousand square feet.
That's correct.
And how many, what's the parking designation for that? How many parking spaces for fourteen thousand?
Well, it's, it, first of all, it's not gonna be used, you know. Well, it's, it, first of all, it's not gonna be used, you know, all, all, it's gonna be used all the time. You know, downstairs, we're gonna have, like, like I said, an ice cream parlor, things like that, in the winter, you know, we don't see that being used. I'm also on the first, that first seven thousand is gonna be, as I said, some storage, you know, a garage will be on the back end that, you know, we can pull in our, you know, our, our equipment to keep up the property. Um, in terms of the actual, uh, calculations, uh, I don't have that per se, you know, to hand. But in terms of the outdoor events or boating events and things that we're gonna be doing, if I can count a person coming by boat, you know, that's gonna impact my numbers.
Okay. So, I was here originally, sorry. Parking was a big issue, uh, that we turned over and turned over and turned over. You were compensated for boats coming in, but you, and it, if I remember right, we, we did consider some of the boats as being counted towards your overall.
We gave twenty-five percent.
There, there was...
We did give.
There was an amount that we gave to you for that. The problem was, is that you weren't even close to what you wanted to do before, and I'm not sure what the event area parking requirement is for a seven-thousand-square-foot building, and possibly plus because you want it two stories. So that's essentially, I don't know if it's thirty-five-hundred square feet and thirty-five-hundred, or seven and fourteen, but there's no way you're gonna meet that parking requirement with what you have here, or the sixty-five, or an additional sixty-five parking spaces in your overflow parking. And so that's my biggest concern, because that's, we've already hashed this out once, and we already gave you what we were allowed to do legally for concessions for boats, if I'm not mistaken.
I think he's right. Unless you guys have...
And, so, I don't wanna have to go back through, and, because I, if I remember right, it was four to six months that we just battled over parking.
We did a lot of time with parking, and maybe we're gonna have to take the time and pull out all those minutes, because I asked Cindy to pull out the final minutes, which were in our packet of what we approved with all the, you know, how the boats were and everything else.
Right, right, that's what we need.
We need...
And that's, I, I, oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, I, you're reading my mind, go ahead.
I, I would like to correct you that it was not the planner that did the no, no, no more than one night, that was us. And those are restrictions that we felt were necessary to keep the area commu- with what's going on. So it's not necessarily to make sure the water is traversable, but it's to keep the residential area to the west from having to deal with boaters parked there all night for a whole weekend, for three, four days in a row, with people that are becoming drunk and belligerent. Not that they will, because there's some people that boat and that don't, and there's some people that boat that do. And unfortunately, a lot of times, this is the way things fall, that the ones that do become unruly are the ones that ruin it for everybody, the seventy-five percent that don't. So it wasn't necessarily that the planner did it, it's what the planning commission agreed upon when you presented this the first time.
I noticed on the site plan on the north side, the canal there, it says no boat parking sign on. So that's where the cottages are, the houses are mostly on that side, right? This side here is mostly Bill Rose and stuff, I don't think it would really matter.
That side's zone commercial.
Yeah.
C-three on that.
Yeah.
That whole side's zone, yeah, we're not, we're not talking about boating or parking on that side. And that's what we worked out with the Army Corps.
I'd even come, I don't know, fifty feet back from that corner, maybe.
I mean, in the past, and you mentioned when you first made the presentation, Steve, we had a public hearing that kept getting added to for months on end, because this was a huge project, and there was a lot of back and forth, trying to see how we can make this work and be congruent with Russ and the community, because we had a ton of people here that were definitely not in favor of this, and we had some network, but it was definitely the other way. And as Robert said, this is, I think at that day, we actually did the motion, it took us like four or five times to come up with a motion.
It did. I read it, the minutes.
I read it, if you read our minutes. It, it was a lot of consideration that went into this, and some of the members here that are sitting here on the planning commission right now are probably wondering what we're talking about to some extent. But, um, I think you've done a nice job, it looks great over there. I don't think we're trying to stop you, but I think we need to maybe spend a little time of, um, backtrack, not backtracking, get us back up to speed, because we don't wanna waste time and reduplicate things we've done. This is another bigger project. Um, you know, parking, like you said, was a big issue. It was also, the outside entertainment was a big issue too, because other community or other businesses in the area, they asked us for outside entertainment, and one would be on the rocks.
Yeah.
And we didn't allow that because of the adjoining neighbors, you know, type thing.
But we did do the sound study, and...
I, you did, and, and the rest of them probably don't know.
Or farther from, from everybody than he is.
Right.
I think we said we'd do it in three phases too.
I think we did, and we also had said we, and it's not anybody's fault, you have not been open for a summer yet.
Right.
You, you got open in October, I don't think that's really the boating season, and you could come...
A lot of boaters, we got a lot of boaters in October and November, and we've had boaters, you know.
We've had.
In March, we had people driving through the ice by boat, you know, to get to us.
It's not the prime season, though.
Right. No, you're right. You're right.
Good for those guys, I'm glad they did it.
Yeah.
So it's good. So I'm just reliving some of the things that we went into, and parking is huge, um, on that, so. Any other comments?
I think the thirty-foot is a good number there for the, uh, rafting off. I like that better than docks. Docks would crowd up that canal.
You don't wanna do that. Did you say, I'm sorry, did you say we could do another public hearing on this?
Oh, absolutely.
Because of, why?
Because of the changes in the special answers, the special answers.
Would it cost them anything? Because I'm not looking to, okay.
What?
Is, is it a requirement, or it's just, it's not a requirement? Okay, it's not a requirement.
But there, so there's a fourteen-thousand-square-foot building going on that wasn't on the last site plan. I think, I don't even think it's a question, I think you have to have another public hearing, because if you don't...
I'm not disagreeing with that.
All of us get to have public hearings.
I agree, we're not allowed public hearings. I'm just talking out loud because I'm asking Steve, who you call the expert, and I'm thinking through my head these out-loud questions, and I'm not disagreeing with anything you said, but I also know Mr. Henninger and his partner, at least at times your partner, I'm not sure still is or isn't.
Well, I, to be clear, you know, I'm partners in Brian's business, I invested in his business.
Oh, okay.
You know, he was helping me out, but I'm partners in his business.
That's fine, that's fine.
But he's, I, I own this, I own a hundred percent of it.
Sure.
It's all my money and all my time and, you know, all my angst in, so.
I get it.
Yeah.
It's, but go ahead, I know what you're saying.
And, and as a, I guess, as a planning commission member that was not here when this went through, I saw it and I heard things that were going on, and, and again, I think it's a wonderful, uh, restaurant, I think everything you've done is great. Um, the parking requirement, how was that calculated? Is it just based on that restaurant? Because it seems like a hundred-and-six spaces is...
They're based on the restaurant and other uses.
So other uses were, at that time...
The outdoor tent event area.
Okay.
And the boats coming.
Some cars counted two people, some counted three.
Yeah, because the boats, or, or, I didn't look at it, for each boat, you have X amount of cars you anticipate would show up with that.
Wouldn't show up.
Would show up.
With the boats.
With the boats.
See, that seems, uh, to me, I guess, that just seems backwards, because as you were stating, I think if I come with a boat, I don't have a car.
Well, some people were saying, okay, I'll come up there in my boat, and I'll tell their buddies to meet us there with their car.
But then they would be...
But that car is still...
They would be a customer in a car, so they're...
Yeah.
Because you're not, I mean, so, I, I guess another question I was, uh, wondering, you know, because of the overnight docking. Again, I'm, I'm sort of new, so I wanna ask a couple of questions. The overnight docking, I mean, isn't, it's not your intent to have short-term dock rentals?
No. First of all, we're side-tie, we don't have the docks in, so people will side-tie to the, to the wall. Um, we're not doing seasonal, you know, the seasonal marinas, which was discussed, you know, in the past, they have to have a certain amount of parking spots, because people come from their house to their boat.
Yeah, because you leave your boat there, that's...
Leave their car there and drive off in their boat.
So your boats are just transient boaters who are coming for dinner?
We're a transient marina, so we have people coming only by boat, you know, and they're bringing, you know, I had a pontoon with ten people come in the other day. So, I mean, people are coming on their boat, all the couples, you know, Algonac people around here, you know, all coming in by boat, they don't have any car. Now, maybe they have friends meet them up, but they come up in a car, and two, three people come in and see them, and, oh, hey, how you doing?
Right, that doesn't, I mean, it doesn't, you don't bring your car on your boat, so...
Right.
I don't, it just seems...
So the reason why it happened that way is because it's being treated as a transient marina.
Yeah.
So there is overnight stay, so if you have a boat...
So it is being treated as a...
So it is being treated as a transient marina. So it's not a long-term marina that somebody goes and parks their boat for the whole summer.
The whole season, yeah.
But you have boats that come in, you have boats that stay, and they can stay for a prolonged period of time. So it's not necessarily an hour that they're at the restaurant, it could be a twenty-four-hour period.
But it seems, it seems counterproductive.
But if you have a boat staying there for twenty-four hours, and you have people coming up to see them, and then you have people still going into the restaurant and using the restaurant at that time, that, so, and that's why we allotted him a certain percentage, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think whatever we were legally allowed to do by the state...
We gave it.
Law, we gave it to him.
Okay.
So, and I think it was near twenty percent or twenty-five percent. So, we gave him an adjustment for that, because is everybody that comes up there with the boat, gonna have people coming in with the car? No. Is everybody coming up there with the boat to stay in the restaurant, gonna stay for a twenty-four-hour or thirty-hour period? No. But is there people that are going to be doing that and have cars come up and park and stay for a prolonged period of time? Yes. And that's why we gave him the allotment that we were allowed, but you have to count what...
Let me, let me ask you this, okay, so you make it only twenty-four hours. Twenty-four hours ends up, I pull my boat out, I drive out here and come back in the other canal and park.
So, I mean, that's, there's other factors that went into it. So, my question is to the planner, is you have essentially a fourteen-thousand-square-foot building for a venue, how many parking spaces do you need? Approximately, I don't...
I need to see a floor plan.
Yeah.
I mean, this, approximately, you're talking a large...
The idea would be the general rule.
How many?
One to two-fifty square feet.
So...
So, four per thousand.
And so you're at...
It'd be adjusted based on the floor plan.
Yeah.
I mean, you've got a lot of storage downstairs and...
Restrooms went down.
Did you have something more?
Do you have power at the, uh, dockage area?
Um, I have, uh, I have the great piping ran to the, to the area, but I haven't ran it down both sides yet, so I haven't done that part yet.
That would eliminate a lot of, if you didn't do it, that'd eliminate a lot of concern for extended, uh, stays at the, at the dock.
Well, I...
But then people run their generators and make noise.
Yeah.
Well, we shut that, we can shut that down in a hurry.
Better to have plugins than people running their generators.
The plan is to, you know, I ran the piping, planning to run the power through there. Um, you know, I haven't done that yet, because I, you know, got, you know, with how long it took to get through and get the approval, I was trying to get open by the end of the season, so I, I had a lot to do. And, you know, I ran the piping, but I haven't set up that wall with the power stations at each location yet.
Is that on the north side? Is that your intent on the north side to have power?
No. North side, there is no docking on the north side.
Oh, okay, nothing on the north side.
There's, there'll be no boat parking out there.
And I, if I remember right, we didn't want the rafting, because we could foresee issues with the boats, multiple boats coming out and leaving and going. So I think that's part of the reason why we didn't allow the rafting for docking.
Sounds vaguely familiar. I think there was a couple of reasons for that, but I have to go into the law.
I think that was one of the big reasons, but, yeah. I wasn't, I'm a newbie, I was not here for that, but had all those discussions. But you're a year-round business.
Yes.
And so there's gonna be times, and the goal is to be as busy as you can year-round, so there's gonna be a fair amount of the season, unfortunately, it's not Florida, that you're gonna have everyone coming back there, and nobody by boat. So, those days, you're gonna have an event going in each. I mean, obviously, you don't wanna have people jammed in and not be able to get into your facility too.
Well, you know, we're not, we, we don't want any, any pileups or, or people getting bottle-clogged in there where they can't get out. I mean, that's kinda why we agreed with the thirty and cut back forty-five of our feet out in the, in the, the, uh, canal. But, I mean, we're getting snowmobilers coming up, you know, we've had fifty snowmobiles there in the, in the, uh, uh, in the winter, when the ice was out. Um, you know, there would be events and things that, you know, are happening out somewhere else by the public launch, where they're, they're coming across the lake, things like that. Um, you know, we, we are looking to use this property more in the summer. You know, that's really the beauty of what's going on out there, uh, although there's a lot to be said for when the ice is out there and the sun's setting. You know, I, I would like to employ more people from Algonac, you know, in this property, and not that I'd like to pay way more taxes, but, I mean, that would be a benefit for the township. It is zone C-three commercial. Um, you know, I do have, you know, there was something that was said earlier, Kathy, in terms of all the people that were complaining, you know, and basically, you know, it seemed to me that it was the same eight people, you know, that, that were coming.
Oh, this place was packed.
Yeah, but the people who were complaining were the same people, you know, month after month.
That's because people, like you just saw with Champions rezoning.
The same guy, yeah.
It's, no, 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 it's the same...
I forget, he's got a calculation.
People don't like to get up and speak like you, or I, me, so I have to, you know, kinda look at the whole room, but I know what you're saying.
Well, a lot of the people that I saw in here, I've seen in my restaurant, you know, when they're thanking me, and a lot of their kids are working for me, so, um...
That was a good asset.
I've been an asset, you know, for the community, and I, I believe what I'm doing here, I mean, to me, it's a no-brainer, like what I did there. You know, I understand what you guys have to do. Um, you know, I think it's a win-win-win for all stakeholders in mind. You know, in the, in the wintertime, we're probably not gonna be doing as many weddings, you know, and if we do, do something, it will be planned out to the point where, you know, I'm not gonna be parking cars on the road, I mean, that's not gonna happen. So, um, you know, I don't want any trouble, I don't want any problems. Um, you know, I wanna run a good, effective business, something that'll be here, you know, long after I'm gone, you know, that can be an asset, you know, for, for future generations. So I believe this building, you know, while I'm still young enough to build it, um, you know, there's, there's a call for it.
Didn't we have a condition where, like, if there was an event going on that the, because you couldn't exceed a certain number of people?
You couldn't have boats going at the same time.
Yeah, I mean, you had to limit the number of people in the, in the restaurant.
Right, and that's a problem.
Is that, yeah.
That's a problem.
Yeah, because it didn't have all the parking like we...
Right, I think we're...
So we need to hash, uh, that parking out again.
We need to hash this out.
The boats in the parking.
We don't have any remote areas that you're shuttling anybody around.
That was talked about.
I did, I did propose that, you know, because that is a, that is something that's in the township, you know, it's in the, in the, in the book of rules, uh, that said that I could have off-site parking, which I had, had a contract and brought it in, but, you know, the previous planner...
But it also needed to be paid, it was gravel.
Yeah, that was the issue.
That was a big issue.
Yeah, that law wasn't paid.
Yeah.
That's why I was asking about the gravel that you have going right now, because I was trying to remember that.
He, I think he had a year to pave the parking lot.
Six months to a year, I, something like that, I remember. So that, I was just curious, because I...
So we're within the timeframe, and it's gonna be...
No, no, it's okay, I was trying to make sure I was clear on what I was...
So you had a remote lot, but that never went through then.
I'm sorry.
You had a remote lot, but that never really was planned.
Correct.
It, it didn't go through because it wasn't paved, but, you know, there was concern, uh, you know, with the planner and everybody else, I guess, that, uh, you know, this is gonna be...
People shuddling back and forth, I remember.
Shuttle and...
And it's F twenty-nine, and there was traffic studies done, because maybe we needed a turn lane there. There was a lot of...
There was a lot.
A lot of work involved.
Well, the traffic study, you know, what happened there is I actually had gotten the approval from, uh, you know, the road commission, was approved that I didn't need a turn lane, you know, based on their studies and whatnot. The planner required me to do a study, you know, which ended up costing me time and another twenty thousand dollars, and they said, well, you don't need a turn lane there. So we, the, the, you know, my contention was, is I had already had the approval, they know every inch of that road, They know every inch of that road. They had done a study at Palms. And, you know, basically, it set me back and set, you know, everything back, like, four months.
It's with the, what, with what you wanna do, depending on how much more, uh, how many more parking spots you have to add and how, what your total occupancy load is, uh, your, the buildings that you wanna do and everything else. You could end up having to go through all that again. This, I mean, that's, I, be aware of that, because that's the, I mean, I don't know what the occupancy load is for a fourteen thousand square foot hall, but I could imagine it could be up there pretty well.
It, it's not a fourteen thousand square foot hall.
I, I understand that, but I'm the same. You, you have, you have some stor-, I mean, you have slated, said that you wanted to use it for storage and stuff. But essentially, until we see what, how exactly the building would be laid out and used, it could essentially be a fourteen thousand square foot hall.
Well, I didn't wanna do a plan similarly to what was talked about in terms of engineering it, designing it, which I'll, I'll be designing it, and laying it all out and then, you know, presenting it, and then, you know, it's hard to know, or, or whatever it might be. Um, you know, I'm gonna put an ice cream store in there, you know, I'm gonna put more bathrooms in there. There's really gonna not be a lot of space there for some type of food, beverage area on the first floor by the time I put the ice cream store in, and the additional bathrooms that I need, and the storage on the first floor. Seven thousand feet goes fast at that point. The upstairs will have open areas where it'll look nice. You can see out and a nice staircase up and elevators and whatnot. You know, that's basically the hall, so.
But what, what I.
Basically, basically, your occupancy in that building is going to be very limited.
It'll be less than a fourteen thousand square foot hall would be, a lot less.
So if you have, if you have an occupancy load of three hundred people for a hall, the, the parking spaces that you need, according to the ordinance, is one and three. So if you have three hundred person occupancy in that, you need another hundred parking spots.
So with the boats, if we count the boats.
Which we're allowed to give you whatever we gave you before.
Well, no, because you only allowed one row of boats.
For, well, I, if we allow rafting.
I, I think he might get more when he adds in the parking. I mean, it's based on the parking spaces. How many spaces, percentage of that is, can be boats. So if he expands his parking, it's gonna expand the boating too.
Let me ask you this, Steve, because I know you weren't here with us first go-around. I feel like we're having a deja vu again. Um, and I don't wanna do that, cause it's not for you, cause time is money. Don't wanna do that. I feel like we don't have enough information to make an intelligent yea-nay on any of this at this particular point. Steve, do you have a suggestion? Cause I'm not.
I'd like to make a parking determination based on our ordinance and what, at least a general site plan, our general floor plan would be. So if you come back to definitively and say, this is what he needs according to the ordinance, this is what he's providing.
And he needs to do.
I need a general floor plan.
Okay, does that make sense?
Yeah, a hundred percent, and I think, I think Steve would need any information from how this parking was determined prior as well. Because if this parking was determined on some other venue items that were gonna be there.
Correct.
Some of that parking could be allotted to this new building, and, because a hundred and six spots for that restaurant is.
That's including employees, boats.
It still seems like a ton.
Handy.
It does seem like a lot.
For, for a restaurant.
However was figured out, I don't remember.
Right, that's what I mean if.
So maybe we can have Steve work in conjunction with you and trying to keep costs down, so we don't get into what we did last time. That's not doing it. Does that make sense between the Steve and you?
Um, I do. I, I think that's a good idea. You know, I'm all for it, and I, and, you know, there are, there are a couple of things that, you know, I would like to, you know, get approved, where I'm not gonna miss the whole season in terms of the outdoor grilling and, and the outdoor cooler and stuff that I think, you know, is basically, you know, uh, things that I think we can, we can get through, and the rafting. So, I mean, that's, that's the areas that I need to, I don't wanna, I mean, certainly, I know it's not gonna go the, the thirteen months or whatever it was. I, I know this will be sooner. But, you know, if I can't start building my little outdoor storage area, serving area, where the grill's at and the, and the cooler, then I'm gonna miss, you know, this season again, you know, so.
Were those items on your last site plan?
I, no, excuse me. We did, we didn't have the outdoor cooler, but we did have, uh, I believe we did have the, the grilling area.
We need to see those site plans, because.
You guys have.
Not the regen.
Oh, the original.
The original, so.
Go ahead.
Um, so reviewing the minutes from January's twenty-second meeting to now, the total number of customers, I believe, was based on his parking. And what it was, is we have two hundred, we have on here a maximum capacity for the restaurant and the event area not to exceed two hundred and fifty-two customers.
For that vet area as well.
Between the event area and the restaurant, he is not allowed to have more than two hundred and fifty-two customers based on the allowance that we gave him for the boats and the parking spaces provided. And that's how we came up with the.
The first time around.
Total number of parking, or what is allowed there. So the area is for the restaurant, yes, the parking spaces, there's more than, but we gave him an allowance to have two hundred and fifty-two customers total for the.
Restaurant.
Restaurant and event area, and that's on page three, it looks like.
It is.
At the bottom, it says to approve site plan and special, uh.
I believe it was really three eighteen, but.
Phase one, phase two.
Oh, it's three eighteen.
I believe it was three eighteen, or it might have been three thirty-eight by memory. It wasn't two fifty-two total.
The total, if I'm reading that right from what I.
It's not to exceed two hundred and fifty-two customers total.
If you have a hundred and six cars and two people come by car, which he was using three, two times a hundred and six is two hundred and twelve. So that's not accounting for one person by boat.
I wanna stop you right there, because this document that I had Cindy Babbish pull is what I signed and Artie Bryson signed, and it says two hundred and fifty-two.
Okay, well, then that's.
Yeah, it's not including staff too, so.
Not including staff, yes.
So that gets you, if you had sixty-five people, that gets you to your three hundred.
But you're proposing to, to not worry about the parking at this point.
We need to do it, you reverse that a little bit, but let me take a chance, uh, stab at, uh, what is required by what he's proposing.
Yeah.
Okay.
To find out what that parking need is.
Yeah.
Okay.
And determine that based on the number of parking spots there. Determine how many we're short. Alright, we're, we're working the opposite way. In the past, I think we worked the opposite way.
We worked a lot different ways last time.
She's not wrong.
We take over.
The need, let's see, with all his proposals, it is, you know, the floor, patio, the, the hall, whatever, to determine what he's going to need for parking and what he's gonna provide.
And I'm pretty sure, and you can pull the document, either with either twenty or twenty-five percent, we gave.
Or the boat.
Right, we were agreeing.
It's in there.
You gave an allowance of twenty-five percent.
Whatever was legally allowed.
It's in the, it's in the ordinances, yeah.
For, for less parking, we gave them that benefit, so they didn't.
There's a waiver that you can.
Thank you, the waiver, that's, it was a waiver, so they didn't have to have the number totally max. We gave them whatever that number was, percentage. But I know it's in our ordinance, so we gave them that at the time because of the argument of boats and the whole spiel.
Would you only be able to give you a general idea of your floor plan?
Yes.
Can you even sketch it?
One point I would like to make with the hundred and six car parking lot, and even if there were sixty boats or fifty, okay, you got a hundred and six and fifty, call it a hundred and fifty total, so call it forty-four boats, okay? Forty-four boats, hundred and six cars is a hundred and fifty. Right? Times two people per car or by boat, that's gonna be three hundred people, okay? So what I'm saying is, they were using three people per car on events. And the capacity of two fifty-two is, for a four-acre island, is, is not the right number.
You can make your pitch to.
Backwards.
Yeah.
We need to know what the square footage is and then determine what, our ordinance doesn't say anything to be about three people or two people or anything. It's based on the fire marshal's occupancy of each of those uses.
We went around and around and around with that.
No, and the ordinance does, because I'm here for dance halls, pools, and it goes, we have a list. It's one for each three persons allowed for parking spots. So if you have a hall, you have one spot that is accounting for three people.
That's what I said. I said one for three cars.
You determine what the occupancy is.
So, correct.
If it's an occupancy of three hundred people.
You have to have a hundred spaces.
Well, I do, I have a hundred and six, so this is saying two fifty-two, and I'm saying your ordinance of three per car would be three hundred and eighteen. And that's what I said.
But some of your parking is based, and you're, I feel sorry for you, because you're gonna have to go through a year's worth of notes. But some of our ba- parking is based because you have a transient marina. And for a transient marina, I'm sure it's in here somewhere, you have to have a certain number of parking spots for every boat slip that you allow. So if you add rafting to your.
It's not a marina.
Well, that's what we were arguing about or discussing last time around. Are you a marina? Are you not a marina? We only have, the only bathrooms you had were in the restaurant. If you hit overnight, what are the people gonna do? Go to the bathroom? Where? And it was, so we kinda got, and we're gonna go down that road again, and I don't wanna do that. If we can curtail it and try to, um, you've got the ordinance.
In, in-water boat wells or marinas, want space for each two boat berths.
Seasonal, that's seasonal marina. Or a transient marina.
But that's one of the things that you are, if you're allowing overnight staying, and with docked boats. You are a transient marina, so you have to have one space for every two boats that you park there.
How about this? Just from our past experience, obviously, Steve, you're at a disadvantage, and maybe Gary, I don't even know if Gary was here. Were you here during this class? Okay, so.
You're on an island.
All right, how about we do this? You make very clear to them what your proposal is as far as. Thank you. And do it that way, cause what we got caught up in last time is, it was almost like us trying to do the project versus you as a developer coming to us. I think it would be maybe cleaner this time, work with Gary, work with Steve. And they're easy guys to get a hold of, and.
So what can we do on this, on this outdoor grilling and outdoor cooler?
So you're looking at taking the building right off the table right, for, right now.
Yes.
You're taking the building right off the table, you just want everything else approved except.
Well, I gotta come back for the building.
Right, right, exactly.
Yes.
So we're not gonna deal with parking, the building, we're just doing everything else but.
The outdoor grill and the outdoor, uh, cooler and the rafting.
But those are modifications to a site plan currently, so. I mean, I, if they were on the, if you're, they were on your original site plan, I, I, I think that's, it's cleaner, but.
Well, I have it on the site plan that I proposed. I have the, uh, the grill area, and I do have the, uh, the cooler. Which is to the south of the building.
It's the smoker grill cooler.
Smoker grill cooler is on there.
Big table, tiki bar.
That's on the new site plan, but not the old site.
All right. It's on the one I proposed for this.
You're not the new one.
This one, yes, the brand.
But not the old one.
Not the one that was approved. Your approved site plan does not have that on there.
Yes, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna stop right now, okay, cause this, we're gonna go down the same road. I think we have a lot of things that we're discussing, new site plan, old site plan. I think we really need to sit down and probably you with the, with Gary and Steve. We need to, if it was already approved on the site plan, I don't know why we would even be discussing it at this point. If it's not on that site plan, then we need to probably do the new site plan. I'm taking a wild guess. So with that, does anybody wanna make a motion?
Can't he just eliminate the, the building on that and just say we wanna modify?
I, I can make a motion to approve the, everything except, uh, item ten and item one. Go ahead. We're, we're making a motion to approve Blue Horseshoe, Blue Horseshoe Board site plan with the exception of summer capacity parking and overflow gravel parking. And to include for approval, outdoor tiki bar, boat rafting allowed by per Army Corps permit. Boat overnight, one night, only restricted, permissible.
Wait a minute.
Outdoor grills.
Hold on, hold on.
Before we even, if we allow him to park more boats there than what we originally gave him, it affects his parking.
Boat overnight, one night parking.
But you don't really need the boat.
But the rafting.
Resolve tonight, do you? You're trying to just get your improvements in. You don't care about the boat track. That's determined next month.
Well, I.
It's not as critical, is it?
What I, what I'm saying is, I, I would definitely wanna start building this grill so, while it's still cold out.
But the grill's something to do with the rafting.
No, I said, I'm saying, I'd like to be able to put the grill in the cooler range while it gets good instead of in the middle of the summer.
Are you just waiting for approval on these other items?
On the, on these other items.
Impact parking.
And I'm willing to, uh, pull the building off, and we can delay that and go through all the, all this, so we can provide, uh, the correct numbers that, uh, you know, Robert's looking for and the board is looking for.
Okay, so casually, boat overnight working.
Um.
Yeah, I don't even think you have to put that in there, cause it was, yeah, yeah.
So.
Suggest if you're looking to approve something, that you approve the outdoor tiki bar.
Yep.
The outdoor grilling areas, the new shed, the outdoor cooler, and the sun shades, and that's it.
So those are items two, five, seven, eight? Am I missing any of them?
You discovered them, is what you did?
No, it's on my, it's on the list.
Okay, I'm going on mine.
This list?
Got it, yep, you're right.
What about the outdoor dining?
Which are all minor modifications that don't affect setbacks or anything.
Okay, so let me re-say it one more time. On the March tenth, twenty twenty-two Blue Horseshoes review points, I'm gonna call it.
About number nine.
There's number two, number five, number seven, number eight.
Nine.
There was a reason why we didn't allow number nine, and I can't remember why.
That's the one he said's giving them issues with the band in the bar, out of the bar, it's not clear.
That was where a tent was gonna be too, I mean.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Your outdoor entertainment.
The outdoor entertainment.
Well, we're allowed outdoor entertainment till ten.
Right, but I thought there was an issue you were having because of the tent or whether it was at the bar or something like that.
There was no outside entertainment.
Do you have outdoor eating there now?
We have outdoor eating.
Okay.
But not entertainment. Number nine says entertainment.
Well, the entertainment is playing in the bar over the winter, and that's approved by the liquor control.
Right.
The outdoor entertainment, I haven't set a tent up or anything outside.
Right.
So the covered outdoor area that we're serving food, specifically in this thing, it said, well, we can't have a band playing there, which is, you know, either under my covered area
See, he's.
or one foot outside my covered area.
Yeah, he's trying to lift that.
So we'll cross off number nine for now then.
Not number nine for now. So we're two, five, seven, and eight, if that was.
And what about the three, which is the Army Corps?
No, cause that affects parking.
You don't want three in there?
It can affect our parking.
It affects parking because, because it's being treated as a transient marina. The more berths he has, which if you're rafting, every boat you go out from the seawall, it would be considered a berth. So if he can raft, I, what, uh, you're, the width of the boat, you're looking at probably ten to twelve foot for a larger boat, for.
So that would be two boats.
You could get two to three boats in the thirty feet.
Yeah.
Depending, so if he has.
Depends on the size of the boat.
If, if you add three boats deep, you're technically adding a parking spot for each boat length that.
But there's two extra car for the boat, though.
There's, there, we have an ordinance on that?
For what?
Yes.
For boat rafting.
No.
Well, if, for a transient marina for parking spots.
Do we?
Could this, could this area be two separate areas, like one area for overnight parking and then one area for the day parking? Because.
It could, it could be, you know, but I mean, based on, you know, what, what the Army Corps permit has, which I have a copy. You know, it's on that side, thousand feet, which is by Bill Rose's marina. It's inside thirty feet. That's what needs to be put on the pilings. That's what the permit states specifically. So what I'm saying is, I would like to be able to raft off, uh, per the permit.
Does that stipulate how many, uh, boats on a raft off? As far as, you know, stacked up?
Thirty feet.
It could only be thirty feet.
So it's, it's two ten-foot beams or three nine-foot beams.
Were forty-five feet out into the canal.
Those are big boats.
Yeah, that's a good sized boat.
Okay, Steve, what's your suggestion at this point? Cause we're going in circles, I'm gonna wind this up one way or the other.
I need the, I need the, that rafting, but the Army Corps is requiring.
Uh, you know what? That was a pig stickler with parking, and I, I seem to think that we, it's only my opinion because of what we went through how many months ago. I would love to give it to you right now, I just know that was a huge stumbling block the last time around.
The part that. The part that aggravates me is if, if you went over the island and you went to Brown's on a Sunday.
Oh, I agree.
And you counted parking, half those people have to leave.
I agree, I don't, I don't.
When you go there, there's all boats and there's.
So, so on the boating, here, let me say something, on the boating rafting, allow per Army Corps permit.
It's ridiculous.
So if, if we limited it to two boats not being over thirty feet. Would that satisfy it?
I mean.
No, we're talking, they're talking sideways like this.
I know, yeah, sideways. You're talking about ten-foot beams or ten-foot beams, so there's only be two boats, even if they were ten-foot, that'd be twenty feet, but still be less than thirty.
Yes.
I mean.
Well, you figure the pilings off, you're gonna need a foot there, and between the boats, you need a foot, so.
They can enforce it, that's what the Army Corps said.
Yeah.
Okay, you can do it at the end.
People wanna walk all over the road, boats and they allow it, that's not up to me, I don't care.
Do you have anything you wanna say? Cause you've been really quiet.
I think he's taking it really confusing.
I don't see a problem with it.
I would, I agree with what he wants to do right now, minus the rafting. I, I don't agree with that right now, but, um, the other things, so he can keep his business moving on, um, the grilling and all that, I, I agree with that, so.
Let me ask you, Steve, with the rafting, cause you guys, I assume, I'm gonna assume, gonna sit down immediately and as soon as you can get him your sketch on a piece of paper or whatever. They could be back next month, correct?
Oh, easily.
Okay. It sounds like maybe two, five, seven, and eight, no one really has a difficulty with. And then with the idea coming back, may, whatever it is.
I would go with the rafting then to, to, to the two boats to start.
May twenty-five.
I mean, the Army Corps is, I mean, the Army Corps is the authority. The Army Corps is who states what's going on with the water.
But the Army Corps told us last time, really, this is just their permit, it's up to us as a community to balance it out with the community, that's what we got stuck.
Well, and that's, so the Army Corps is saying, this is the maximum that you can do. Not saying that you, we have to let you do that, that's, they're saying, if the township says you can do whatever you want. The same, if, if we said, you have free will, okay? The Army Corps is saying, this is the maximum we're gonna allow you to do. So they, they have control of the water to the extent that if we allow you to do something, even if we say you can do it. You can't go over their standards. So if they tell you, well, you have to stay within thirty feet, if, even if we told you that you could go seventy feet into the canal. You still have to stay within that thirty feet to abide by the Army Corps.
I have to abide by the permit, you're a hundred percent correct.
So.
And their permit says I must put these signs up.
Right, but what they have, their jurisdiction, is saying that you can do all this up to thirty feet, but we don't have to let you do that.
Do you have the signs up now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. The signs, signs are taken care of, that issue's taken care of.
I have an inspection coming up by the Army Corps that was supposed to happen this week, but they ended up pushing it back a month.
Okay, so your signage is up per the Army Corps, and so that part's taken care of. The only thing we're trying to accomplish is you, not only, but having a floor plan so he can run the numbers. Including, which would then correlate with.
Yep.
Rap, or whatever you wanna call it, rafting boats off. That sounds like from Steve, you get him the information. He's gonna be able to run those numbers, crunch those numbers, however you wanna phrase it. And we sitting up here will have a really better understanding, hopefully, of what is, we're actually approving or not approving.
Are we allowed to do a meeting, not wait the month, if he's that anxious to?
We can do a special.
Special meeting, maybe a two-week meeting out, that would maybe accommodate you.
Yeah, I mean, I can get this done pretty quick.
It's all depending on how he gets the information to.
And could all of these items be addressed at that time?
Uh, yes, absolutely.
Is two weeks gonna hold you up? I'm just not, I'm, I'm not comfortable in just picking.
I would like, I would like to get at least, I have a rougher ready to go, I mean, I didn't think this, I, I couldn't see why this wouldn't be approved for, for, for bigger taxes and the job that I've done. So I, I've lined up a, a, a rougher to, to build what I need for the storage, but he's, he hasn't started, I haven't given him any money. But I, I would like to get it started, cause it takes time to build, as you guys know, and I'd like to have it done and cleaned up before the season this time. Last time I missed the entire season, so I'd like to get it set up. I don't wanna build it while people are walking around.
Here's the thing though, I think it'd be a lot cleaner if we put it all together. I think it really truly would be a lot cleaner, or try and not maybe.
Such a short building season.
I know, but we, I mean.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna hold you up. I hope you understand that, like, nobody up here wants to hold you up, but I do, I do think, again, I wasn't here for the, the original process, but you understand the process.
Yeah.
So I think you understand that bringing us a site plan and expecting it to be approved tonight, probably, I, I think you would expect that that wasn't gonna happen. I would hope you expected that wasn't gonna happen.
You know, I, I guess I was naive based on what had happened before and then what I put on the board, you know, for you guys to see. That it would be something that since it was Zone C three, and after talking to the planner, what I wanted to do, um, you know, some of the things that he talked about to me was.
Wait a minute, who's he, the planner?
The planner.
Steve? Okay.
Steve. Uh, you know, one of the things that he said to me is that, you know, you can't, you know, you can't go against what the Army Corps and restrict that. I mean, that's what he, that's basically what was said, you know, so I thought, na- naive to me, but I, I, I thought that this was gonna be. Agreeable, or if not, there would be some points that could be taken off. I don't have to start the building. If you guys want me to wait another year. If I still got the moxie to do it, then maybe I can, and maybe that'll add another twelve grand or thirteen grand, whatever, and people. You know, as long as it's run like I've, I've run my restaurant now, okay, so, um, you know, it's, it's, it, I thought it would be approved.
I mean, I, I, I don't wanna see you wait another year for that building, I wanna see that building go up, but I, I don't think, we can't consciously, I can't consciously. Approve it without a public hearing, one, because the neighbors, you already know, there is contention, but I just, I, I think, I think we need it all put together in one shot.
You know, whereas I think that's, that makes sense to me too, you know, and I think with the numbers, and what I wanna do with the first floor and how many people are gonna be using it, and we can do season, in-season, out-season. You know, something that's never gonna get resolved is people saying, well, if you're bringing a boat over, you have to have a parking spot. For a car, you know, just makes no sense, you know, in terms of the numbers to me. So that's, that's really the point that, you know, and, and the majority of people, even if you had to have a car spot for their, for their parking. If people are leaving the restaurant and done for the day, there's open parking spots in my place all night long. You go there, there's not a car in the parking lot, I got a hundred and six cars there. You know, if I had a hundred and six boats out there and a hundred people with a hundred and six cars, they brought their cars somehow with them, on their boat, then the parking lot would be full. At which point I would put a lot of full sign up.
I will deal with the parking issue with them and come back. I don't think there's any reason to rehash the same arguments.
I don't either.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Uh, I have an objection if you wanna approve those five items, or those items, uh, that we talked about. The rafting's gonna handle itself, the signs are going up, and we should have bought there, and they're not gonna raft this in the next two weeks anyways.
I would not think so, go ahead.
Well, and that's, yeah, the site, well, the rafting. You'd have, because the whole thing with the parking, and that is affected by the rafting, so that's, and I don't know.
It's that messed up formula we got.
Yeah, and that's, I don't know.
Needs to be fixed.
I think the ordinance is wrong.
Yeah.
I don't think that he should be required to provide parking.
I agree, neither do I.
A marina, unless it really is a marina.
Well, it doesn't count as a marina if he has, is allowing boats to park overnight.
Maybe there's a compromise that could be made, and I think Chris was starting to allude to it. Maybe there could be an area that's limited to like thirty boat areas for overnight parking, or overnight stay, or twenty-four hour stay. And the rest is limited to parking only, eight hours, six hours, five hours, whatever that might be, twelve hours.
And this is what happened last time. The applicant came to us, and we spent months doing this, because he, they came with.
Cause our code's messed up.
A number, this is what we want, and then we kept going and going and going. I can see this is where we're gonna go again. So maybe we should just take a step back.
I agree.
For the whole thing, take the step back. You two sit down, maybe with Gary, maybe without Gary, however you wanna work it out. But it should probably be very clear defined, what do you want? And we can get him back in three weeks, whatever, but it's.
If I'm willing to take the building off, which is what we're gonna rush to get for the, for the, if I'm willing to take that off and not even bring it back. For six months or, or I'll wait. Do I need the stress of that? No. I mean, and the rest of this stuff then would be, you know, what I would be looking to get approved now. You know, the overnight stays and things like that, I can, I can table that if you guys are freaked out. Uh, you know, if people drink and party on the island, their daughter got married, and they don't wanna drive their boat out at, at eleven o'clock at night. You know, I can't kick them off the wall. You know, there's a law against that. If something happens, it's, it's, it's illegal, okay? Uh, but, you know, the boat rafting, if I don't allow three parking out overnight, which, you know, I mean, something like that. But during the day, you're worried about the car parking, overnight car parking with these three boats going out, or two boats, or whatever the rafting is. I need to get the rafting per the permit, and.
But, okay, I wanna stop you, cause here, this, we're going down the same road we did last time. If you want, you want the rafting, and then you want them overnight, but you have no facilities for them to use, cause they're overnight, we're kinda going back and forth.
My, my restaurant is set up to, to be unlocked so they can use the bathrooms.
I'm not comfortable again, cause I, I, my past experience is going, oh boy, here we go again.
So. I'm not comfortable with the rafting. They can make a motion for whatever they want. We can, whoever makes a motion can make a motion for whatever they want. But. You just said you can't kick them off the wall, which is fine, but the rafting, well, you have to understand. We put restrictions on this the first time for rafting. We don't have to allow you to raft out to the thirty feet. You could put a twenty-eight foot rope. Say you cut a ten-foot beam in half, so it put and subtract five feet from the rope. So you put a twenty-five foot rope on a ten-foot beam boat. And it could technically sit out there at thirty feet, and you're rafting one boat. That's a restriction that we put on you. You can raft one boat next to the sea, one boat essentially next to the seawall. Just because the Army Corps says that you can raft out to thirty feet, doesn't mean that we have to say, you can raft three boats. And it gets you to thirty feet, you could just raft the one boat out to thirty feet. You don't have to have three boats to the thirty feet. We don't have to allow you to have the three boats. The restriction that we put on here is, the first time, is you have one boat that you're allowed along the seawall.
Is that accurate, Stephen?
I have to check the record.
Okay, we're not gonna keep going over this, cause it's getting late, you know, we're probably all prepared, um, we're gonna have to make moves.
Yeah, and that, that was, that was added when we approved the, approved this the first time. Wait, in my, I should say, in my experience, because I am a builder, I've dealt with restaurants, medical buildings. I've dealt with residential on rivers that fall under the, uh, Natural Rivers Act. Just because something is allowed by one department, whether it be the Army Corps or Eagle. They're telling you that they will allow you to do up to this. That doesn't mean that another department, like the Planning Commission. That has the ability to put a restriction on the special land use, can't put that restriction there. We can still put that restriction there, but you, because we are allowed to legally by the special land use.
Control the water though.
Okay, we're done with this. We, sorry, we, we're gonna go around in circles, I know it, and I know you're trying to do a really good job with the place, and it looks like you're doing a great job. But I think there's just a lot of catching up for some people to try to do, maybe get clarification of how we were working with it last time through. So we probably need a motion somewhere, somehow, somebody, otherwise we're gonna.
I'll make a motion that we approve items two, four, five, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven on the original application.
What was that again?
Two, four, five, seven.
Do something other than circles.
Eight, nine, ten, and eleven.
Stars.
Eight, nine.
Ten and eleven.
Ten and eleven.
Okay, Steve, when you went through that, just, I want, cause he said the little ones were two, five, seven, and eight, so I'm just gonna double check.
So we got a support.
The same sheet here.
Thank you.
Two, four, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven.
But when you originally said it, you said the easy ones to would be the, would be the.
Here's the motion to the board.
Well, it's the motion so we can approve or.
Okay, so there's your motion.
And that was Chris, uh.
Maggie, two, five, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
And who was the second on that?
We have a second jet item.
Mark.
Second.
Second. I should, I almost jumped out of my chair.
Yes.
Two? Yeah, two.
Two, four, five, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
That's the motion.
On the email, March.
Tenth, twenty twenty-two.
Uh, well, March fourteenth, looks set March fourteenth. It's dated March tenth, if you look.
No, you're right, you're right.
So, so listen, and, and item number three, with the overnight parking.
That's not.
Or boat rafting, I mean. If we eliminate, if we push it to two, down to two, would that satisfy someone on this, uh, board?
No, not me, I'm sorry.
Until we get clarification.
I don't know why.
Until we get clarification for parking spaces.
I'm not worried about parking spaces, he's gonna come up with them sooner or later anyways. I agree.
Okay, so the motion was made.
Supported by Mark.
And second.
And second by Mark.
Okay. So Deborah Addy.
Absen excused.
Mark Boshard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hilltunin.
No.
Christine Holcomb.
Absen excused.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling, no. Bob Jacobs?
No.
Kathy Schweikart?
No. Okay.
I would like to make a motion to allow. All that, computer's moving.
What was the results of that?
It was.
It was denied.
It was three yes, the rest no.
Okay, let's make it total.
Yep.
Three to two.
Uh, I would like to make a motion to allow two. Five. Seven. And eleven.
No cooler?
Why not eight?
Oh, is there?
There's an eight, outside refrigeration.
I have to apologize because we aren't supplied printed copies anymore. And eight. So that was two.
Five.
Five, seven, eight, eleven.
This is.
Not nine, not about the outdoor entertainment.
So the motion's for two, five, seven, eight, eleven, okay.
And why not ten?
Any support?
It's, it's, it's moving to a.
Okay, that was a motion, any support for that motion? Support for that motion either. I can't.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make another motion.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on. Um, I can't support a motion, can I?
To approve.
Wait a minute, I can? I'm supporting the last motion then, I'll do it. I'm getting tired. Okay, so there's a motion for two, five, seven, eight.
Two, five, seven, eight, and eleven.
Okay. So, you did the motion, I supported it, any discussion? How about a roll call, please?
Eleven, there was no nine or ten.
Deborah Addy.
Absent excused.
Mark Bouchard.
Whose motion was that, yours?
Yes.
No.
Christopher Daggy.
I get it, it's two, five, seven, eight, and eleven is what this motion is.
Yes.
I actually called for a discussion prior to the vote, and we didn't discuss that.
I'm sorry to say.
Number ten. On why it, what is included in the motion is nothing more than extending the gravel parking area.
Can he have a gravel parking area?
As long as he paves it within a certain amount of time.
So. I'll, I'll amend my motion then to add ten if it's paved within the year of opening the restaurant.
Is it six months? No, wait a minute, is it?
For the time period allotted from original.
Whatever the ordinance says.
Gave me a year on the last one, enough adhered.
But I think we gave.
It was the allotted amount of time that was allowed.
I believe it, I believe it was six months, depending on.
It was six months.
He had problems with the ground compressing, right?
Yeah, it was six.
Depending on conditions.
Yes, it's, the ordinance says six months.
And I'm gonna be hitting this one within the timeframe I've ex, I've exhibited to the board that I'm a man of my word.
Sorry, Mark. Okay, let's restate the motion, at least that you started with.
So, okay, so, motion to approve. Items two, five, seven, eight, and eleven, and amended. To include. Item ten. Uh, to be as long. As gravel portion. Is paved. And original. Allotted. Time period.
Next motion. I'll support that. Any discussion? Sorry, I missed you last time around. Roll call when you're ready.
Deborah Addy is absent excused. Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hilltunin.
No.
Christine Holcomb, absent excused. Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Bob Jacobs.
Yes.
Kathy Schweikart.
Yes.
Two, five.
Very clear, though, it's two.
Eleven.
Five.
Amended.
Seven, eight, and eleven.
And ten.
And ten, sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't go around that one.
But isn't ten gonna kinda depend on what kinda parking you get?
Yes.
Your parking numbers, uh, it's just doing complete.
Well.
The whole thing's doing complete.
Okay, thank you, board. I'll work with him, and in that two-week offer, I'll, I'll get that turned around within a year or two, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure we're gonna do that two-week offer after what we just did, we'll see.
Okay.
You could only deal with the parking and the research?
All right, I'll take, that's fine.
Yeah.
Whenever we come up with the next timeframe. It might not be this next meeting and the meeting after. Okay?
Well, what?
The next thing, does that need to be advertised?
What's in?
You know, so, notice to.
If it's a public hearing.
No, we'll have to bring it, and then it'll be put to a public hearing.
Yes.
And then.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good evening.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, moving on to seven B ordinance.
All right.
Tax amendments.
These are provided for you for just your review. Uh, the accessory buildings under three oh one still need a few changes. I'm working with Gary on it and our attorney, based on that court case. Uh, so, but this is just, I wanted to inform you what we've been dealing up with up till now. Uh, so we'll come back when we're ready to have a public hearing, probably within the next month, for sure. Uh, and then there is also some changes to, uh, three twenty-four, which was height exceptions, and those are ready to go. Uh, but I think we should, unless you wanna have a separate public hearing next month on those, we could wait for the, hold them all together.
For which one was that?
This one, three point two four. We're, we're dealing with height exceptions, and then we're dealing with accessory structures. Height exceptions is, uh, basically, it, it just clarifies, I like Gary explained it a little bit more, but, uh, it, it.
Stop being Gary if you wanna explain more.
It gives a, a different, higher height the farther you are from the property line.
Cause, uh, three point two four is, uh, the height exception portion. And we wanna line that up, because there's been, there, there's two ways to look at it. Three point two four, uh, which I think is accurate, and then, uh, or inaccurate. And then, uh, to get the, the true, we gotta go to section eighteen. And that goes across the board as far as zoning is concerned. And it all talks about height exception as a two to one. So for every two foot you increase your setback, you can go up one foot higher. Uh, that's consistent all the way across eighteen. Three point two four, which came in at a later date than section eighteen was. Uh, three point two four, it, it's gotta be just a misprint, uh, that says one for one. Uh, for every one foot you increase the setback, you can go up one foot. Where section eighteen is clear all the way across all zonings, that says it's a two to one. So we're just looking to clean up.
Just putting it in line.
Can I ask about the two acre, the lawsuit one? Somebody else approached me about, no one's ever.
It was an appeal, it was an appeal, not.
There you go. Um, that one, but somebody else approached me about we're looking at above two acres, how many buildings you would have. And like, we're never gonna police everybody, but if we're already looking at below two.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Do we need, should we look at the whole thing and do it all at once?
I, I think as far as, uh, section three point zero one, uh, that's what me and Steve were trying to do.
Okay.
Is kinda just go across it, make clarifications where it needs to, um.
For the, for the accessory buildings.
Right.
For accessory.
No matter what your acreage is, or non-acreage, whatever the case may be.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
In there right now, and, and part of the appeal was the fact that three point zero one addresses properties greater than two acres.
Correct.
And said you can have two accessory buildings. Because our ordinance was not clear for under two acres, then it seems to me that the judge found it to be a free for all, you can't restrict any.
Put as many as you want.
Yeah, and that doesn't make any sense at all.
No.
If you're saying if you got two or more acres, you can have two, uh, but less than two acres, I don't know.
How much parking do you need for that?
That's right. So, it doesn't make any sense, but that's why really that's sparking us to clean up three point zero one. And we're looking at three point zero one straight across.
Okay.
Uh, we're also looking at, um, three point one six, which is the storage, um, you know, containers, the shipping containers. Uh, we're looking at that, but we could have an issue with something I wanna do, and we're gonna converse with the township attorney, uh, to see if it's something that we can do. Because we enacted that shipping container, and that was back in, uh, August of twenty twenty. Um, if the point numbers are right. And, you know, we just said, well, if you got a shipping container, you have to do this, make it look like a shed, a, a typical shed. Uh, but what my concerns are, is that what sparked it, is that we have shipping containers all over the township, without being able to regulate any of them. So I'm looking for a way that we can at least go by and say, there's a shipping container. Uh, and what I would like to happen, and I don't think that we can per the, the township attorney, is to say, all right, you got a shipping container, it's not gonna cost you anything, but we want you to register that, so that we know as we go down the road that that's a registered unit. So when a new one pops up next door, then we'll be able to make sure it complies with our ordinance. So we're trying to look at that too.
But you talked to the township attorney already about that?
I did.
Oh, you did, okay, that's.
Well, it's, it's, when you have a zoning, if you put it in the zoning ordinance, then you have to have the grandfather clause kicks in, so you can't go back and make anything retroactive like required on the register. So we're looking at the possibility of creating, recreating a licensing ordinance for them, which can be retroactive. And that's what we're going to be talking to her about again.
So you three are coordinating?
Yes, but I just wanted to give you an update. We want, we wanted to give you an update of what's going on with us, and that's what this is about.
But does that cover your?
Yep.
Cause I've lost them in my file papers, I'm sorry.
It does.
They're in there somewhere. Okay, I'm gonna go on to item eight, which is unfinished business. I don't see any unfinished business at the moment.
You have the recreation plan?
Oh, shoot.
That's, that's all right, it's just here for your information.
Uh, I wanna thank Chris.
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
We're setting it to the superintendent, because it doubled. It doubled our responses, and it did skew our resp, didn't, allowed our responses not to be skewed to the elderly generation. So I think, so I think it's.
That's bad news for some.
Sorry, guys.
And three hundred and twenty, three hundred is very good, so.
No, we appreciate it, that was a good suggestion.
I would like to ask your permission to close down the, uh, survey, though.
Chris is gonna come up with some other.
Yeah, so I was gonna go.
I was gonna say, we're gonna go and poll the voters.
Want to go over to the arena? Just gonna go to the arena when they come off the votes.
He's gonna go to the maritas and poll them. He's gonna take his buddy with him at the end, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm just kidding. So you want permission to close?
Yeah, I'd like to. It's been up for over a month.
Saying okay with everybody?
Yeah. Then we can move on to the next phase.
The next phase would be?
Uh, presenting, uh, coming up with the, uh, the demographics and the goals and objectives.
So maybe the next vote or so?
Mm-hmm, easily.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything more that I've skipped over, I'm sorry.
No, that's it.
Thank you for all your help today, I appreciate it. Thank you, Gary, for your help also.
I feel bad that I don't have the history on some of those things, but, uh.
You know what, even if I do have the history, it's hard to keep track of what we did, that was a very.
I'll learn it.
Good. There's a lot there. So, and that's, that's where the parking came.
Got it, please, yeah, thanks.
Is, so, that's, I would look into that, and how it's affected by rafting, is what I'd recommend, because that's, and that's where I don't wanna make a decision, because if the rafting counts is.
Sure.
Uh, birth, then, yeah.
I'm sure we'll be communicating on that.
Yep.
Okay, eight's unfinished business, I would still say we don't have anything. Nine is planning consultant's report.
Nothing new.
Number ten is ZB representative, W. Addy's not here, but Nagy was here.
I was there, it was an idea in my social life.
This is beating heart, and you might wanna retract that.
Uh, all right, so, item six A, which was seven nine four at Anchor Bay Drive, that was granted, it was a variance of height variance on a accessory building that was, uh, they granted seven and a half feet variance, and they also granted a, adding a second floor onto a garage. Um, the reason given on, said because of lot size, basically, and that other ones were similar along that strip. Uh, six D, uh, eight nine nine nine, eight nine 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 Field Road, which was the kennels. There was a variance granted for fencing, because the fencing had been up a long time, and given the lot configuration, it wasn't practical to take it down, and it didn't seem like it impacted any of the neighbors, so. Because of the hardship on the property, the configuration, and on, they turned to that. And six C, which was three two four one Point Turnbull Road, that was just withdrawn.
Thank you.
And that was it.
So the variance for the presence was the room to run, so this can come back to us, right?
Yes, so that's coming back to you guys. Uh, that was just because the, the ordinance said that it had to be a hundred feet away. Uh, so no one was there to oppose it. The existing fence, uh, was allowed to stay fifty.
So it'll come back to us whenever it gets ready?
Yeah, it's coming back to you for.
Cycle.
Thank you, and that was another Chris suggestion, I think. He's just full of suggestions. Good ones, right? Okay, eleven is board representatives' report, Mark.
Uh, okay, I think the most, uh, relevant thing that we had at the board meeting was a water easement, uh, that we purchased, uh, for the new water line going to Harson's Island, and that's running down, uh, Island Drive, underneath the, uh, North Channel. And it'll come up, and then it's gonna actually configure a loop system with the existing water line that's over there. Number two for new business, uh, is a discussion, uh, concerning new home construction with a existing home remaining on the property, uh, until the new construction is built. I'd like to open up a discussion with that at, uh, one of the next meetings coming out, or you gonna do that already, or? We're waiting for Steve on it.
No, I had a discussion with Christine Anderson, who's the township attorney. Maybe you should reach out to her on that, and Steve, I don't know, did you have a discussion with her on that? Is this, they wanna build a new home but not take the old home down?
Right.
I would suggest, um, reach out to Christine Anderson, new township attorney. Um, she's, we're, they're welcome to come join us in the meeting, or however you wanna do it, but she can give you, um, her thought process on it.
We can have a brief discussion with Gary, and Gary, please, he has the ability to do that now anyways, so he has, right, Gary?
Well, there's some provisions as far as building accessory structure, uh, before the building plans are, are done for the new house. Uh, we have had an instance out on the island where, um, you know, a boathouse was okay to use as the main dwelling, and until the house was built, they had posted a fifteen thousand dollar bond, uh, that, you know, won't be released until the new house is built. And I think that's probably, because we have some older cabins, they wanna build a, a bigger, nicer, newer type setup. And I think it would fare us all well if we would allow such a thing. But we've gotta make sure we've got a hook, that we're able to make sure that that house goes away at the end of it. And I think a good way to do it is get in their pocket, and say, you know, it has to go, there's no C of O allowed until the other structures are removed, and put a, put a bond on, maybe seventy-five hundred, ten thousand dollar bonds, if you wanna do that.
I would suggest, just because I was talking with Christine Anderson a couple of weeks ago about some other things that we were doing, it may be beneficial to have her weigh in on that, because from her point of view, as an attorney trying, and trying to, um, defend whatever ordinances we have, I think that would be available input on that particular one, cause.
I agree.
That's, I, I agree with you, Mark.
Yeah, I, I agree, I, uh, you know, we, let's find, find tune the details and everything, and see what Christine actually said, and whether we can get away with it, and whether or not.
Her suggestion how to.
Well.
Tackle it.
We gotta look at the history too, and who we denied in the past.
Yeah.
Cause they may come forward.
Um, is that something? I know Chris, she'll talk to any of us, but would try to conserve her time and energy and money that's being spent.
Well, we've gotta talk to her anyways on the three point one segment.
Do you wanna bring that up then?
Bring her up, absolutely.
Will it be okay with you, Mark?
Yep, thank you.
There we go. Thank you, any more from the board?
That's it.
Okay, chairpersons report, other miss, I thank you guys very, very much for taking the time and energy tonight, I appreciate it. It's not easy, especially if you haven't been here for some of the other stuff, really, it is. And I'm glad everybody feels like, looks like we could talk at least, and do what we need to do. Um, we do have tomorrow night here, Metropolitan Planning is doing an update of the master survey. And for this area, it's for, from six thirty to eight, am I saying that right, I'm doing it off the top of my head?
They're preparing a countywide master plan.
And they're gonna be here tomorrow night, though?
There are three locations, so over the next week or two, uh, maybe they already had one, but, uh, they're, they're, one of their central locations is here tomorrow night.
That's right, the master plan tomorrow night.
Yeah, from six thirty to eight thirty, anybody's welcome to show up.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, I'll use. Um, item thirteen, planning commission member comments.
Uh, I'd like to say for a township that has more shoreline than anywhere in the state, more waterways, more boats, Lake St. Clair is one of the busiest in the nation. We treat boats in this park horrible, our ordinance is horrible. We're, I don't think it's good for business, it's, it's bad.
It has its moments, yes, for sure.
Yep. Feeling a bar by operating U P and say a snowmobile can't show up.
Some people do say that, though.
The only thing we wanna do with boats is keep the wakes down.
That's a really hard one to do too. And then, though, the people who live next to Marina, like to keep the noise down too, so, I can apologize for that one. So, there's a lot of different things going on there, but I understand. Any other comments?
I just had a question.
Sure.
Now, since, since there, those changes were agreed upon for, um, the Blue Cabana property, we don't really have a legitimate site plan anymore for that, correct? The site plan that, that he, that was approved prior, didn't have the things that were just approved, and this site plan has things that's not approved. So, do, we just, we don't have a site plan currently, is that something that they?
I can ask for one that doesn't show those.
You know, just that, that would show what was ever approved, just so that there is something on record. Because I, like I said, I just, I don't know.
Actually, no, in retrospect, we pressured him, he's here, sorry, didn't think about it, getting late. We just had plan, but minus.
I was just, that's why I was just uncomfortable with.
You should have said something, we would have listened to you.
I just wanted him to, I, I would have loved it for him to come back with all of the changes so that we could, I didn't wanna not, I, again, the only reason I voted no is because I just wanted to be clean.
You know what, but that's legit, you know, that's a good point, we should have done this site plan, which is, this one says it's nine eleven twenty.
Alright, so it's not.
Someone asked for an updated one based on what happened.
Based on what we did, okay.
Yeah.
Will that help?
I, I, I just wanted to make sure, because, because we're gonna visit this again, like, we're not done.
Oh, I'm sure we will.
And I know I, I've tried to read through a lot of the records that were from the past to try to understand, but it's hard through minutes to understand.
Cause they're not verbatim.
Yeah, so,
I get it.
I'm trying to understand, but I really do think, I, I know Robert's passionate about the boat thing, but I think that needs to be looked at, because
Steve's probably
Unless he, unless he is truly gonna try to run overnight rentals or something, he, he has a point by saying that he doesn't, if I go somewhere in my boat, and even if I stay the night, I, I don't have a car, and nobody's meeting me there, I, I just, I think there's a little...
I don't disagree, but our ordinance has...
Right, I know our ordinance currently does, I just think maybe...
Currently has, says for a marina, which he, he himself called it a transient marina.
He did.
Which that's, I ban him.
Even, and I mean, through all of our discussion, and I think, uh, approximately a year that it went on, that, I mean, he referred to it as a marina, so, if he's referring it to as, to it as a marina, he has to abide by the parking spaces for a marina. So, I get it.
Yeah, like I said, I wasn't here for all of it, but...
Well, what we have to all keep in mind is that Clay Township is going with what Tom said. We are a boating community, period, and a recreation commu- community. So everybody has boats, so that's what we should be catering to.
I agree with the reason, we can't just
Yeah, with the reason.
We can't just forget everybody else, I agree with the reason, no doubt about it. I think difficulty last time around was, it was, it was very difficult to find out what the developer really, really wanted.
He, he was all over the map, I mean, cause he, the pool was so big, and then he had two event areas, and then he was switching them over back and forth.
Too bad you missed all of that.
Yeah, I really wish you guys
Still seems like he's, so I just wanted to see it clean.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but from past experience, I figured this was pretty
It was, okay.
That pool is gonna hold like four hundred and fifty people.
It was!
It was, you know.
Sounds awesome.
I mean,
Bar, it is, it's pretty sweet.
He wanted like this, when the parking allowed this.
We had all this dark people in here, and I'm not, I'm not wanting to reveal it, but seriously, I don't need to exaggerate, I'm sure there's the recordings out there somewhere, but this place was packed. It was not pretty, it was very, it was like a nonstop, people for public comments went on for an hour and a half.
I liked the best one, I thought it was that eighty year old lady got up there and says, I'd like to have a place to take my grandkids, there's no way around her.
And that's what I'm saying is gonna happen.
Thirty four for a hotel. You can bring it up.
That's what I'm saying, it's
Yes.
It's, and I'm not, I definitely not picking on this, just bed through, look through this, we, we did so many separate meetings with the planner, with the, with the, at the time, I don't think it was Gary, I think it was Sid at that time, we met at different locations, it was just a nonstop, we could never get to the end, what do you want from, what do you want to present to us? And the night we actually approved it, it was like four or five motions later. Like we just did tonight.
Yeah.
So, I don't think it's gonna be any different, no matter what happens at the piece of property. So at this particular point, just seems like these are not cleaner to do what you said, but if you're willing, thank you very much, and Chris, this is a really good suggestion. Get an updated site plan, so what just happened tonight is definitely for the record, keeping purposes in the building department, so we're all on the same page.
I think we've had
I like it.
I think we have gotten some criticism too for, like, dragging things out too long.
We have got a lot of criticism for that. So that was planned in the past.
So I don't think it's a bad thing.
Cause I really wanted to go with him, so, but I'm like, ooh.
Ideally, yeah.
Ideally, but it would've been much cleaner if we'd done it the other way, I agree. Um, but I'm glad everybody said they're two cents worth, even though you were really quiet over there.
I'm taking it all in right now.
Oh, you feel like a toothpick.
He's a spud.
I'm trying to listen about this parking that he has going on over there, so.
It was cool, yeah.
But I understand at the same time, he wants to, you know, start cooking outside, I, I get it, and I understand Chris's point right there with the whole paperwork, keeping everything clean, I, I get that too. So I kinda see both sides, but
Sure.
I wanna see him move forward a little bit with the food and...
Yeah, cause he did, he did not get through the summer, he didn't get the opportunity to use the summer last year.
No.
So, I understand that, but he, you know what?
Steve, you're lucky. I want to back up, uh, Robert's comment on army corps permits. And I don't, I haven't seen any as far as I've read the verbiage on army corps and eagle, and they may allow you to have a boathouse out on a pier. But it also says in there that it comes down to the local government
Oh, yeah.
As to whether or not what they build is permissible. Every one of them, every army corps and eagle, they all say that in there. Uh, so they're saying, yeah, you can build it, but you gotta check with your local to see if you can
Well, that, well, that's the thing.
Right on target with that.
Right, that's the thing concerning rafting. If, if, if we wanna, if we wanna control rafting or whatever, then we better develop an ordinance for it, we don't have any.
It's the, yeah, we wasn't wrong with the army corps of engineers permit last.
Yeah, the army corps, that way, but then Airbnb, we can't do anything, because they, they tell us what we're gonna do.
And that's, yeah.
Oh my goodness, okay. Any more comments from the commissioners, if not, you know what, we don't, we went long enough, I mentioned number fourteen, there's no public comments? Anybody? No. No one left. Stay here long enough.
We bore him down.
We bore us all down. Okay, somebody make a motion, so we can
Adjourn.
Make a motion?
Motion second.
There you go.
That was, uh,
We got Mark, Tom.